It is 5:30 PM and we are going to open up this session of the Lewisville City Council. 5:30 PM and we do have a quorum. First up, we are going to have a quick workshop session and actually that is simply to speak with our attorney on section 551.071, consultation with attorney.
Executive session.
Yeah, executive session, yeah.
Mayor, can I recommend that we go through just the regular agenda items and consent agenda items?
Okay.
Then we can go into executive session and then we can come back out.
Rather go that way. Okay, that's fine, that's fine. So first up is the workshop session, a discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda Item A, invocation. Item B, pledge, pledges to the flags. Item C, proclamations. Item D, public input.
Mayor, this is one other.
Okay, so we want to do that now?
You can wait.
Okay, at the end, okay. So, item D, public input on short-term rental regulations. Again, folks, this is an evolving piece of case law, if you will. So we are really pleased to see so many folks here. I'm assuming most of you are here to speak on this particular issue to help us be informed to make a good decision for the city. So I want to thank you for that. We do have a few small rules on decorum for that, but we want to make sure that everybody is heard tonight, so I'm glad you're here. Item E, public hearing. Counsel, any questions on item E? Item E2, public hearing? Item E3, public hearing? Item E4, public hearing? Item E5, public hearing?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify in the admin comments on E5, it says that staff is requesting that City Council approve ordinances. We're actually only holding a public hearing today, so the ordinances will be considered at a future council meeting.
Thank you. Item F, visitor-citizens forum. Item G, consent agenda, G6 minutes. G7, Second Amendment to the developer agreement with Russell Glenn. Item G8, ratification of the Trees for Texans grant. Item 9, variance to Chapter 3 animals.
Mayor, I would like that pulled.
An executive session for that as well? Item 10, resignation from the library board place six and appointment of Abigail Crafton. Item 11, two alternative standards. That's a regular hearing, by the way. That's no, that's, we're in H11, we're no longer on consent. Item 12, consideration of two alternative standards for the UDC. Any other comments or questions on the agenda for tonight? All right, then at the request of our municipal attorney, we're going to go into closed session for section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to short-term rental properties and...
What's the other part of the...
Item, just item D and item 5?
No.
Item 9, okay, item D and 9, so. Are we good? Have I stated the proper code this time around? Awesome. All right, so we're going to adjourn, well, not adjourn, we're going to go into a closed session for just a moment, we'll be back. There we go. We're going to go back into our regular session. First up tonight, Councilmember Jones is running a little bit behind, so if you all would please join me in a moment of contemplation and let's please focus our thoughts on the Middle East right now because things are, things are getting really difficult over there and we have friends and family that we know are being impacted. And so if you could keep those folks in your prayers, but please join me for some silence. Amen. Councilmember Troyer, could you lead us to the flags?
Please join me in the pledges to the American and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state that under God, one and indivisible.
Still one of my favorite things to do. All right, we have a couple of proclamations this evening, and so first up, do we have anybody from ITS? There, there we go. Chris, the team, come on up. This is, you know, it's not the guys with the cars and the guns, but it is absolutely critical to the successful security of our city. And this is Cybersecurity Awareness Month. So for those of you who don't know, the Internet's kind of a dangerous place to be anymore. And so these guys, you know, are dealing with hundreds, if not thousands, of different trials to attack and implement all sorts of nasty stuff on our infrastructure. And it's really tough because municipalities especially have lots of critical information that we store and keep, you know, even just water bills. And so that makes your city a target, and we have an amazing team here that keeps us protected on a daily basis. So this is our proclamation in support of Cybersecurity Awareness Month for 2023, and whereas the city of Lewisville recognizes their vital role in identifying and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have significant impact on residents, as well as our individual and collective safety and privacy, and whereas cybersecurity education and awareness is crucial to everyone, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the Internet, be it with a computer, mobile phone, or other Internet-connected device, and whereas we showcase the need to inspire, engage, and inform the public about steps that all citizens of Lewisville can take to protect themselves online. Heightened awareness of essential cybersecurity measures will contribute to keeping the overall community safe and secure online, and whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, and awareness of essential cyber hygiene will improve the security of the city of Lewisville's information, infrastructure, and economy. Now therefore be it resolved that the month of October 2023 is hereby designated as Cybersecurity Awareness Month and the city of Lewisville proclaim this 16th day of October 2023. Mr. Lee, do you have any words?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank everybody in the organization for participating in our security posture. It's really up to all of us where the, our end-users are the lowest-hanging fruit, if you will, and it really takes all of us collectively to strengthen that posture, so thank you.
One side or the other, we'll make it. So a couple of pro tips on cybersecurity. If somebody wants to make you feel rushed, it's bogus. Number two, and I know nobody wants to do this anymore, but pick up the phone and call somebody. Don't call the number on the screen, call the old-fashioned phone number that you have somewhere written down. Those two things will save you a lot of grief in the future. All right, the next one, do we have any of our Rotary team here? And I hope at some point we no longer have to do this proclamation, but it's important. So if you know Rotary, you know that polio prevention and eradication is a big part of their mission. And the three of us standing up here are local Rotarians, and this time of year we always have a proclamation about the elimination and reminder of polio and the vaccine that is amazing at stopping it. So whereas polio is a crippling and potentially fatal disease, it still threatens children's and parts, children in parts of Asia, and whereas it is critical that individuals be vaccinated against polio in order to avoid infection by the polio virus, and whereas the incidence of polio has declined throughout most of the world due to various education and immunization programs worldwide, and whereas Rotary International and individual Rotarians have contributed over 1 billion and spearheaded collaborations with donor governments, the World Health Organization, UNICEF, Centers for Disease Control, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, leading to a significant reduction in the incidence of polio worldwide by over 99% since 1985, and whereas Rotarians from the Lewisville Morning Rotary Club and the Lewisville Rotary Noon Club have generously joined in these efforts through monetary contributions and participation in overseas immunization initiatives since the campaign to eradicate polio was launched in 1985, and whereas Lewisville Morning Rotary and Lewisville Rotary Club Noon members, along with fellow Rotarians worldwide, are joining together to raise 50 million per year matched 2 to 1 by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and are sponsoring local activities during the week of October 22nd through 28th to educate the general public about polio and to raise funds for its eradication. Now therefore ITJ Gilmore, Mayor of the city of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council do hereby proclaim the week of October 22 through 28, 2023, as End Polio Now Week, and October 24th, 2023, is End Polio Now Day, and call upon the people of Lewisville to join the two Lewisville Rotary Clubs and their fellow citizens in taking part in this special observance. Proclaim this 16th day of October 2023. Let's give you guys a hand.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything to say? Can I just say Bob about it?
Bob?
Yeah, well, here, we'll get a photo first.
Okay.
That way James can move to the back of the room. They're all the same, so.
I just would, we are very close to eradicating polio. One of the things that is very interesting to me is when our Rotary Club distributes dictionaries to third graders in the Lewisville School District, I always ask the question, how many of you know what polio is? And very few of the third graders ever raise their hands, which is a very, which is very pleasing because that means, you know, it's been eradicated in the US, although we did have one case in New York last year, or this spring, which was brought in from out of, out of the country. But when I was in third grade, if I would, if we would have asked that question, excuse me, every hand in the room would have gone up because everybody knew somebody or was affected in some way by polio. This year, there have only been around 20 cases of polio in the world that were, they were in Pakistan and Afghanistan. And so we are very close, but it's still going to take a lot of money to get rid of it. And so I thank everyone who contributes, if you're interested in contributing to the effort, you can go to rotary.org and you can click on a polio button there and do a contribution. So thank you.
My grandfather and my uncle both had it, so it's not that far, far gone in this country. Better, I'm getting older. All right, item D, public input, potential short-term rental regulations. To speak in person during the public input, short-term rental regulations portion on this agenda, you must sign up to speak before the meeting begins with the city secretary. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. You will not be allowed to speak again on this item during the remaining portions of the meeting. Written public comments may be submitted through ecomments, and to access ecomments you can go to https://cityoflewisville.legislator.com/calender-aspx and utilize the ecomments link located in the far right-hand side of the line containing the details and agenda for this meeting. Ecomments will be accepted or were accepted until 4:30 PM today, the day of the meeting. Of course, if you have additional comments at any time, you are more than welcome to email city staff or your city council, and we will place all of that information together as we continue to look at all the, all the pieces and factors that are going into this decision. With that being said, I do have several requests to appear before the city council. First one I have here is Ms. Teresa Wells. And folks, as you come forward, if you wouldn't mind, we'd ask that you just addressed me, the mayor, and Teresa, if you wouldn't mind coming up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor, thank you, I'll decline this time.
Okay, fair enough. Next on the list, Arthur Shea. And he wishes to speak in support.
Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Shea, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Arthur Shea. My address is 762 Mockingbird Drive, Lewisville, Texas. My problem with this rental property is not being controlled somehow is that I find them ubiquitous to our parking areas. They park in front of the house, behind the house, they crowd the road. Usually there's two or three cars involved, a family, a big family coming in at a reunion, and they have no place to park, they think, without parking on the property to which they paid the rent. I feel, I'm not going to get into all the legal aspects of this, but it seems to me the property owners in the city of Lewisville, whether they're living in the property or not, are responsible for the upkeep of that property and the maintenance of it. My point is that this property that I am speaking about on my street appears not to be taken care of. They're parking, they're parking all over the place, neighbor yards, and typically it's on weekends, I'll grant you that, but sometimes it carries over into the middle of the week, and my folks, folks on my street really are kind of upset, but it seems that if, in the rental agreements that these people obtain from some, from some entity, I don't know where they get them, we should have some control as to what is and not proper in the city of Lewisville. Basically, I know that covers a lot, but it's a suggestion, it's somewhere to start, and I think we ought to start now. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, sir.
Mayor, thank you so much for bringing this up and letting the people of Lewisville have a say in short-term rentals. There are three short-term rentals near my house. Each house has a high capacity of people, and they have become a problem, a problem with the parking. I live in a cul-de-sac, so all the people that come to these three short-term rentals use up all the spaces in the cul-de-sac. This weekend, there were trucks that came with huge trailers, and there is no room for them to eat, maneuver, let alone park. And I think the police were called this weekend about that. I'm a short-term rental user in Hawaii, but it's just a small apartment. You get rated on if you're a good person or not, or if, if the apartment is a good But I think the houses in Lewisville should, in private neighborhoods should not be allowed to have essentially hotels in their neighborhood. And I would like for you guys to regulate it and to not allow it in residential neighborhoods. I mean, commercial neighborhoods, that might be something that could be okay for apartment buildings, but certainly not in residential neighborhoods because it's essentially a hotel and it's bringing in strangers, traffic, noise, the parties are very loud, trash behind my house. So I really hope that you take a stance like a lot of other places have and made the short-term rental a hotel, and it's illegal in residential neighborhoods. I really appreciate you guys looking into this.
Thank you, Ms. Rector.
I'm sorry, I missed the address.
And I'm just, just going to give that down. Your address is 2337 Clearview Court here in Lewisville?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Croney? And if I do, please give me some grace if I mess up your name.
You've got it perfect, thank you.
But Mr. Croney, name and address for the record.
Yes, Chris Croney, 1320 Robin Creek Cove in Lewisville. So I made the conscious choice to move from Flower Mound after living there 10 years to Lewisville because I thought it would be a great place to raise my family. I was wrong. My house turned into a party zone because of the short-term rental next door to me. Not only do people come and spend the weekend, which is, you know, for the most part, fine because usually there's two or three cars, they also rent the pool out for parties where I'll have 20 or 30 or 40 cars wrapping around my block to have a party. There's not a day goes by that I don't have to pick up trash out of my yard where somebody's opened up their car door, their stuff's fallen out. I pick up bullets off of the ground. Sometimes I find drugs in front of my house where my kids and I live. It's not my home anymore. It's a transient area where people come and go. They don't care about it. They're there for whatever they rented it for, a weekend or an afternoon, and that's all. I've had people walk into my house thinking it was the rental. I have people come into my backyard all the time thinking it's the rental, and it's completely unacceptable the way this has gone. I have absolutely no problem with the profit motive or people making money, but most of the people that own these don't even live in the city. The one next door to me, they live like five, 10 miles south of Lewisville. They're making a lot of money that's not getting put back into this community at all. And again, if I had it to do over again, I would not make the mistake of moving to Lewisville if I'd known this was what it's going to be like. It's every single day, and it's not just two or three cars. And they find ways to circumvent other laws of the city. For about six months, a company rented it for people to live in, and they ran a business out of the house next door to me where they were selling solar panels door-to-door. They conducted their sales meetings two or three times a week where they would bring in 20, 25 of their sales reps all day long for a sales meeting, and again, disrupt the street, disrupt the traffic, bring in trash, just constant stuff. I have to go out and flag down the postman to get my mail because there's always cars in front of my mailbox, and it's just not the right way to be. And I just, it's just tough. You know, if it was next door to you, you wouldn't want it either, so.
I have a clarifying question before we go.
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's Patrick over here. So you've rented and renting the pool out, I'm assuming, I'm envisioning this is a neighborhood pool that they're renting out, it's not like a private pool?
No, it's a pool in a backyard. There, there are ways that you can do not just short-term rentals, but you, there's also a website where you can rent your pool for the day, the weekend, where people can just come in and out.
I see. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And I have a question. And I'm sorry, because I'm a little protective of Lewisville. Does Flower Mound allow short-term rentals? Do they have regulations or bans on short-term rentals?
I do not know what the Flower Mound laws are, but all I know is at the time, and I understand things are different today, we didn't deal with this when we were there.
Okay, they do not. They do not have any ordinances, they don't have bans.
Yep. Well, I wouldn't want to live there now either.
Just needed to point that out.
Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
It's Sierra Lucille Collins, and it's 2309 Clearview Court.
Thank you.
Gotcha. I'm just going to keep it short and sweet, you know, we all want to go watch the Cowboys game later. So who are we to tell people what they can do with their homes at the end of the day? Whether they want to rent it out to somebody, whether they want to rent it out to a family. This is America, people can do whatever they want with their homes, and you know, I get where people are coming from with the parking and stuff like that, but regulating it, it's just, it will only make it worse. And then when you regulate it, then there's going to have to be laws to regulate it, and then it's just, it's, it's going to be a whole endless cycle. You know, when we came here four years ago, the weekend to the council, y'all had no problem with Airbnbs, and then all of a sudden now it's a problem. So, you know, it's not broke, don't break it, you know? Let's keep it simple. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
I'm sorry, before you go, Ms. Collins, curiosity, do you, do you own a short-term rental?
Yes, me and my boyfriend.
Okay. Fantastic, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I appreciate it.
All right, next up, Rose, and I'm so sorry, I'm going to miss this last name, is it Golson? Johnson, okay, thank you. Oh, there it is, I got it. Name and address for the record, please.
Rose Johnson, 2309 Clear...
When you read it.
Clearview.
Yep.
I was, actually, wanted to say that we have helped so many people to bring their families together. One guest who hadn't maybe been able to see her sister in 20 years was able to celebrate with her grandchildren, her sister, and it was just an amazing story for them. And I'm going to keep it short and simple, but I think Airbnb's rock, and I want to see the Dallas Cowboy game, so like I said, I'm going to keep it short.
Well, thank you for coming out and taking the time off from the Cowboys game.
I'm sorry, one, before you go, same question, do you own a short-term rental? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Tim Gorts?
Hello, hello.
And Mr. Gates, name and address, please.
Tim Gorts, 2309 Clearview Court. So I'm pro Airbnb, and before I put my house on Airbnb, I lived in my house for several years, and there was some unfortunate things that happened to me and my family that we had to put it on Airbnb, okay? My mom, she's a retired teacher, you know, she dedicated her life to teaching kids with disabilities, you know, her monthly income is $830 a month, okay, to live on, you know, she can't live on that. My father, 100% disabled veteran, you know, he retired from the post office at Flower Mound, and, you know, he's in a wheelchair, you know, he's in a place that costs $10,000 a month, okay, because he can't bathe himself, you know, and he can't lift himself up, and we're not strong enough to lift him up when he falls, okay? I run the biggest volunteer organization in Dallas-Fort Worth, it's called Volunteer Love, okay? We go out, we feed the homeless, we take care of kids with disabilities, we take care of kids, we take care of battered women and children, okay? And I funded all of this from my Airbnb, okay? I take care of me, and I change thousands of people's lives every year. We've touched over 100,000 people's lives, we have over 7,000 people in my organization, and I'd encourage everybody to enjoy it, volunteerlove.com, okay? Now, you're going to hear some stories in here that people are going to talk about, oh, you know, you know, people parked on my thing, and they were loud, and you know what? I agree, I agree. You know, I, what I do, what I hear is... You know, what I do, what I hear is there's four problems, man, there's trash, we gotta fix the trash problem, I agree, you know? Raccoons come up and bust my trash cans open all the time because I live right on the water, right? Then they say traffic, you know, okay, you know, and I say, I limit how many people can be in my house. I sit there and say, absolutely no more and I have technology that tracks how many people can be in my house. So if there's more than 16 people in my property in any given time, which I have a huge house, okay, I'm immediately alerted, they're kicked out, boom, they're gone, no refund, bye. You know, and then it was to deal with the parking situation, I agree. I live on that cul-de-sac too, you know, and when there are people, when they have their neighbors over, have their friends over, I can't park, right? So it's a little cul-de-sac, it's tiny, because literally you're talking about five parking spots is what we're talking about. We're not talking about this huge street. We're talking about a street with 10 houses on it. That's what we're talking about, guys, right? This isn't some huge neighborhood, it's a little tiny street, you know? And so I want you to think about, you know, when I came here and I moved in and my family came here and we asked the city, we said, hey, what do you guys think about short-term rentals? Because we knew it was gonna be a stretch to move here and to get that house going in. And I said, we 100% are not gonna regulate this, we never, never plan on regulating this. We are pro-business and we are not gonna regulate it. And I went on forward from that point, okay? And I want to say something else. I love my neighbors and my neighbors, I welcome them all to come to my house and come talk to me, come knock on my door. I feel uncomfortable driving down my own street to my own house because my neighbors got signs up and down, I think, no, come talk to me, come, can we talk, right? And I welcome everybody to come to my door and to come talk to me. And I've had zero calls, I've had zero complaints because I'm a good owner, I do the good things, I do the right things, you know, I have people coming from all over the world, you know, that have stayed there and had beautiful experiences, you know, from grandparents having the last weekends with your kids before they're gonna die, right, to church organizations, to, I mean, I've literally had 300 people stay at my house and not one complaint, not one call. Now, take these people that are getting the calls and the guys with the, you know, with the bullets in the backyard, yeah, let's get rid of those guys and get rid of the bad people. You know, I agree, I agree, you know? But don't rob me of my property rights and the things I've been promised, don't rob me and my mom and all these people that are benefiting of things that we've been promised by overregulating, you know, and so there's gonna be a fine line there. And I am part of the short-term rental organization in Lewisville that we have just beginning to band together, we're seeing everybody else band together, it's like, is your policy bigger than my policy? And we don't want to fight, we want to all get along.
I want to be respectful, but that is your time, sir.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I do have a follow-up question.
Sure.
So, and I may have written this down wrong, but does Ms. Collins, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, they both lived in the same. They had all lived in the, at that property.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wrote that down correctly.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you for the clarification.
And my mom, she'll be coming up here and talking as well.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Meet me halfway. I hope I didn't get it too bad. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Tibiru Ban, 1113 Raleigh Drive, Lewisville 75077. I immigrated here in USA from red iron country for reasons, from many, many other reasons, freedom being the first one. And in my country, if you are not a communist member in your house, somebody else was put, was forced in your house and in my personal experience, I lived nine people in two rooms. These rooms were used as a kitchen, these rooms were used as a sleeping, but overcrowded over there. Now, we want to have the same thing in Lewisville when we have Airbnb and we don't know how many people will show up to that party. Dallas is fighting against short-term renting, Forward does the same. Red districts in Dallas did not start saying, this is a red district, no, it started with one house. I fear for the safety of my grandkids who are living next door to a proposed Airbnb. Value of the houses will definitely go down and that is my speech.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, name and address.
My name is Vandy Stone, 1108 Fire Water Circle in Lewisville. So I'm not against the short-term rentals, actually Airbnb, Airbnbs, I know that there's an economic value that it brings, but I do believe that it should be in an area such like in Arlington, I think they, you know, the Dallas Cowboys stadium in that area, it used to be like one mile, you can have like short-term rentals and then now they've pushed it out to like two miles. It makes sense, right, because that's a lot of entertainment. I live in a small cul-de-sac with kids on the street, we get tons of cars on the weekend, there's a whole bunch, you know, parties, parties every weekend and it's really starting to impact our neighborhood. And, you know, I know, I know we talked to the police before and they said, hey, you can call the non-emergency or if it's a true emergency, call 911. I get all that, but sometimes in the middle of the night, the non-emergency number's not gonna help. And of course, there's not, you know, murders, there's not real violence going on, I mean, but there's still a lot of nuisance, so like the police won't come, but, so I guess what I'm trying to say is that there's a lot of heartache, a lot of pain, a lot of like, I mean, we're spending all, all of our, your tax dollars, our tax dollars, spending time talking to you. I don't know how many emails, how many phone calls, how many meetings that we're gonna have to be, that we've been in to try to be heard. You know, I don't know how much you guys can regulate, honestly, I don't know legally, like what you guys can do to regulate these things, but if you guys can't do anything for our pain and anguish, I think you guys need to reduce our property taxes because we're impacted. So if the short-term rental owners are gonna benefit from that, well, we need some benefits too, like reduce our property taxes. I think that's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Noriko Redman?
I'm Rod Hill, I live at 1870 Pecos Street, Lewisville. My wife and I moved in, moved to Lewisville a couple of years ago and after working a lifetime to retire. And we both envisioned a quiet, friendly, simple place to retire, which we found for the better part of a year until someone bought the house next door to us, turned it into short-term rental, and then they moved out of town to buy their second home with the proceeds they're getting from the long-term rental. The rental that is keeping us awake at night with the parties, the rental that gave us people that walk into our home confused or intoxicated, you choose, our grandchildren, we don't get to turn them loose on the street to ride their bicycle up and down the sidewalk with complete confidence because there's another set of strangers in the house next door. We don't know who they are. The traffic, the trash, the noise, everyone who lives next door to a short-term rental has the same story. And all I can ask is that the city would put the welfare of the average citizen above catering to a select few who are banking on this situation that's at our expense. So I just ask that you consider the whole of the community rather than select few that are benefiting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna call like a, since I think we're talking about postseason baseball and football, I'm gonna call two names, so I'm gonna, who's up and then who's on deck, maybe that'll help with everybody's time to get out to a game, so, but no rush, y'all come up as you need. Mike Dibble? And then Ainsley Stelling, I've got you on deck. Name and address, please, sir.
Mike Dibble, 1114 Fire Water Circle. My concern is having the rentals in the neighborhood. I live directly across the street from 1113, which is a very nice home, it is a short-term rental. We'll have anywhere from two to eight cars there every weekend, basically every weekend. And the owners of the property, they keep it up really nice, they have the people park in their driveways. Problem is, we don't know who's coming or going, we don't know who's there. There's 10 houses in this cul-de-sac, six of them have people in that are retired. One right next to me has two little boys and there again, they cannot ride their bicycle or they do, they ride their bicycles and their little cars and stuff in the street. The people that live there know about these boys and watch for them, but the rental people that come and go and do not. The place is well-maintained, we're very fortunate there and the owners have told me, since I am across the street, if I notice any problems, to get ahold of them, which I haven't had to. I don't have the noise that the other people do because I live across from it and the pool and the stuff's in back of it. But it's just not a good place for a rental house in a cul-de-sac. We have, you know, Lewisville's got a ton of apartments that could be short-term rentals and hotels, motels, there's a lot of options, but I do, I would appreciate if the council would consider some regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ainsley Stelling? And I've got Diana Hill on deck.
I'm hoping everybody's got their packets.
And name and address.
Ainsley Stelling, 1001 Forest Park Drive. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. We all know that there is risk in everything we do. On page two of the packet that's being passed around, when you get in your car to drive anywhere, you take a risk of an accident. If you work out, you risk an injury. If you have an addiction or bad genetics, your health is at risk. Even investment firms make the statement that all investments come with a risk, earning money is not guaranteed. With that being said, nothing in this life is guaranteed. So why should short-term rental owners live risk-free with their choices of owning and/or operating a short-term rental in a city where there are no current regulations? The prohibition of operation of whole-house STRs in residential neighborhoods does not affect owners as gravely as it sounds. The IRS allows for all kinds of tax deductions for rental properties, including improvements of a property through depreciation reporting and allows for losses up to $25,000 a year through deductions. Albeit, no one likes to lose money, but it exists for people who have experienced a loss. Page three, the real risk of short-term rentals resides with the neighbors and it is a risk we cannot easily escape. I want to clarify that it isn't the owners that are the true risk or just a few bad actors, but what their clientele bring to the neighborhood, with the lapse of background checks, false renter statements, and inability and/or unwillingness to monitor renter behavior. The claim that hosts closely vet their guests is not an entirely true statement. Per Airbnb's own legal terms, they do not require verified government ID or guarantee users are who they claim to be as their background checks are limited. A simple Google search for bad Airbnb renters hits on pages of horror stories from both renters and operators. A complaint to Airbnb goes into the dark abyss of Airbnb support, which is why the Better Business Bureau gives them a one out of five stars for poor customer service. Once again, the burden falls to the neighbors to live on guard in the possibility that the next group will be a bad renter. Page four, based on the city survey responses, a word cloud of the most common words was generated. From that, I've made a few observations. Residential areas are for residents, not for hotels. Parking, noise, trash, parties, strangers coming and going are a common theme. Several responses were positive or had no bad interactions with short-term rentals and that's awesome, but there are no promises that it'll remain that way. These are the risks that neighbors deal with week in and week out with a short-term rental in our neighborhoods. Apparently, there has been gunfire and SWAT interactions with short-term rentals that did not make the news, but how long before one of those instances does make the news because of a death or injury? There's an increase in this possibility if these unregulated hotels are allowed to continue to operate in our neighborhoods. Page five, in previous council meetings, we've discussed how high supply and low demand prices are reduced to drive up demand. This in turn lowers the quality of renters, which increases the risk taken on by neighbors. Short-term rental owners only risk damage to property, maybe some press coverage, but they don't risk the death or injury of a family member who happens to be sleeping next door if there are stray bullets. We're all aware of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Security and stability rank just behind the physiological needs of food and water. Short-term rentals create a lapse in the sense of security that require us to function. In fact, 84% of residents in North Texas don't even want to live next door to a short-term rental, according to a WFAA poll from 2018. Douglas Newby says that short-term rental owners don't even want to live next to short-term rentals because they don't add desirability or value to a neighborhood. In the few months I've been researching and engaging with residents on this issue, I have yet to meet somebody that says this short-term rental has been a blessing to my neighborhood. In fact, I've heard the exact opposite. I've met several people who have felt safer next to an abandoned property than they do a short-term rental. Thus, one could deduce the only positive effect on neighborhoods is seen by short-term rental owners and hosting companies in the form of profit. In summary, no one is immune to risk. We all deal with it every day, whether we choose to acknowledge it or not. However, while Louisville has hotels operating in single-family neighborhoods, residents will continue to bear the brunt of the risks and live in fear. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. May I ask my question? Chief, how many gunfire calls and SWAT calls have we had to short-term rentals in Lewisville?
We haven't had any.
So, so I want to be, I want to be respectful, but the applause, if it escalates, we're gonna need to keep that down, please. I have Diana Hill and Lisa Rousnott.
My husband had just spoken and he conveyed everything that I wanted to say to you, so I have to save time a little bit, but I totally agree with what he said.
I don't know what you're doing, sir, but you're doing it right.
Oh.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Ms. Notten?
Yes.
If you would name an address.
2044 Briar Cliff.
Thank you.
I've lived on Briar Cliff for 31 years, raised my family, and a few years ago, I probably wouldn't have had an opinion at all about Airbnbs. And I'm not gonna talk about the traffic and the lawns and all of that because that is a problem, I'm gonna talk about safety. In the last year, Airbnb, SWAT, and police have hit three times. We had a gentleman that would walk by, living about four houses down, smoking marijuana and I know the police were called a couple of times about that, but I don't know if he got back in the house or whatever. I know SWAT was called, that he had a gun in the house, it was a big deal, you know, on Briar Cliff and that was several months ago. A while back, my next-door neighbor was renting out and there was a domestic fight, police were called. I think it was settled. I think it was settled, and it wasn't a problem, but police were called. And the latest has been my backyard neighbors, and we, they're not, they just sold it, it's six acres, and our house is open to them, and we had, I was out watering. First, I, they have had a lot of people coming in to work on it, and I'm like, "Oh, are you the new neighbors?" "No, I'm just working, it's gonna be an Airbnb," I've been told two or three times. And they've been working for a couple months on it. And then I was out a few weeks ago, and undercover SWAT came within this far away from me. I mean, with guns, full bodyguard, I don't know what it's called, but that's where the whole big thing on Valley Parkway, which I'm sure a lot of people heard about, but that was in my backyard. And I guess the biggest concern for me is like, again, Airbnbs, you know, they're talking about an Airbnb there. And I, it's just, I'm concerned about safety. I mean, so three, three things that have happened right beside me in the last year has either been police or SWAT, and two have been SWAT.
And this has been in Louisville?
Briar Cliff.
They don't show any calls for SWAT or gunshots.
Valley, the one behind me was Dallas, and it was on the news, and I'm sure everybody was watching it. They shut down the Thrive, they shut, that's what was going on.
That wasn't an Airbnb, ma'am.
They're turning it into an Airbnb, that's what they're doing. Those workers were back there working.
Okay. Y'all, I am so sorry, but we need to stick to, what is happening with short-term rentals in Louisville? What she is speaking of is a shooting that took place very publicly on the streets of Dallas, and they tracked that individual here. It had absolutely nothing to do with assess-
We don't know what it-
A short-term rentals. Well, we do. And so I would like, instead of assuming, we need to get to the crux of some of the real issues here-
Okay.
-when we have absolutely no calls for gunfire, no calls for SWAT-ing, and example that you just said had nothing to do with a short-term rental. It did have to do-
The SWAT thing that was called-
-with a fugitive, though.
The SWAT, okay.
It had to do with the fugitive that just happened to come here, but we've got-
And they're turning it into one. The people working there-
I don't know what they're turning it into.
So, so let's-
But I would like to stick to the real issues that you actually are seeing, like parking, like trash, like parties, like noises-
Like somebody-
Like that stuff.
Councilmember Kate, I'm gonna ask that you just go ahead and let Ms. Noughton finish.
Okay.
And if there are things that are discrepancies, we can follow up on those. But if you feel unsafe, you get to state why you feel unsafe.
Yeah.
And don't worry about the timer, we'll take care of the rest of your time, so please continue.
I mean, that's, you're right, it's not open right now as an Airbnb, they're just saying it's going to be. So when this kind of stuff is going on right beside us, it just makes, yeah, it's a safe, I'm worried. It's definitely safety. And SWAT was called a few how-
Let me apologize to you, okay? And I understand that. Let me apologize to you. I just want us to be clear, and not assume that something nefarious is going on, that it must be an STR.
Because what it does is it takes away the credibility of the argument.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
That's all. So let me apologize to you for cutting you off on that particular thing.
Okay.
Okay? I apologize.
That's all right. But I, that's, SWAT was called on a short-term. I know the man that was walking around, and it was a children issue, and, yeah, and a gun issue. So, that's on Briar Cliff.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate you. I have Missy Elias, and then Gail Andrews after. Name and address.
Missy Elias, 2054 Briar Cliff Road in Louisville. Mr. Mayor, so I wanted to, Lisa and I are neighbors, so I did want to clarify, because the house two doors down from me is a rental, and I want to address a separate kind of rental. This is a rental where the people are leasing out by the bedroom. So it's not a rental house where they lease out the house for, let's say, a four, this is a four-bedroom home for $2,000. They lease it out by the bedroom for, I don't know how much, but let's just say $500 for a bedroom. So when you do that, I mean, I want to bring, address that type of rental to you because it is a problem. And the SWAT team was called out. I'm sitting there at 7:30 in the morning, and I have SWAT people right outside my front door. Once again, this is a rental by the bedroom, so, yes. Police were there all weekend, and then on a Sunday morning at 7:30, the SWAT team was called because one of the tenants pulled a gun on the other tenant in the same home that they're renting from. So, once again, Airbnb or rentals by the bedroom absolutely should be addressed in the city of Louisville. It's, it's, when you rent by the bedroom, it certainly brings down the quality of tenant that you can have in, let's say, a 2,000-per-month home. So that's something I wanted to bring to your attention also, as regulations need to be done for rentals by the bedroom.
May I ask a clarifying question about that?
Yes.
So I want to make sure I understand, so this, this was a, these were long-term rentals by the bedroom, not, not STR?
I don't know exactly, I don't think they were rented for a year by the bedroom. I think that they rent to people, they have a lease, so I think that's probably different than an Airbnb.
Okay.
They could have rented, I, of course, they evicted the guy who they arrested.
Sure. Okay.
Can I ask you a question? Is that owner occupied? Does the owner live there?
No.
Or are they literally taking a house and individually renting all these rooms?
That's correct. The owner does not live in this home. It is a lease home. And, you know, the yard is a mess. I mean, I've lived in Louisville for 34 years, same house, same street, and have had absolutely no problems. Love my neighborhood. But in the past two years, I can think, I know of at least four short-term rentals on my street right now, and it is a problem, a huge problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Susan Goats?
I'm-
Goats?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
I did mark that I didn't want to speak.
Okay, no worries.
Because I really didn't, but-
She's available for questions.
Since you've called me-
No, go right ahead.
I'm Gail Andrews.
Thank you.
And I live on, I live on Briar Cliff as well, well, 2046. And I walk by the houses that are short-term rentals with my dogs every morning, and I see, I mean, I know the house on the corner they're talking about. I walked by with the dogs when the SWAT team was there, so I don't have any idea how we could say there aren't any calls, but that SWAT team was there all day. But also, when I walk by that house, I see men outside, I don't know if they have on boxer shorts or swimsuits, but they're walking up and down the street, brushing their teeth with electric toothbrushes. There's parking on the corner so that you can't see when you want to make a right-hand turn, you can't tell if cars are coming because cars are all along. I've seen the traffic, I've heard the parties, there are three or four on our street, and two of them, I actually believe, rent out to multiple people at a time. The one that Missy and Lisa talked about, and then there's one further down the street where I think the people actually live on the ground floor, and then they rent out bedrooms on the second floor. I've looked that one up on the Vacation Rental website, and that's what it advertises, shared kitchen, shared bathroom, private bedroom. But that's my experience.
Well, thank you for sharing. I'm sorry I asked you, asked you up on the do-not-wish. So those of you who did the do-not-wish to speak, I may ask you to speak anyway. Susan Goats? Goats? And then Timothy? Goats? Is on deck. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Hello, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Just want to read this off to you. Thank you for hearing my perspective today. I'm a Texas retired special education teacher and the wife of 100% disabled postal carrier and veteran. I worked on my heart all my life, as has my husband. Several years ago, my husband developed Parkinson's, leading to many falls and necessity of a wheelchair. Additionally, he's been placed on oxygen 24/7 due to contracting COVID five times. As a family, we're unable to have family time due to his physical limitations and barriers and needs for privacy, did not meet up with a hotel experience. He could not ambulate or have his independence and his physical needs could not be addressed. We searched for an answer and looked into possible solutions. The Realtor in Louisville told us that Louisville was open to Airbnbs as an option to make some passive income and to allow for times when we, as a family, could spend time together. The property was purchased and many improvements were made. Now the home is ADA compliant, and he can move independently throughout and can have his physical needs addressed. When we are not using the property as a family, it is rented out, providing for the income we require as seniors that was promised to us at the time of purchase. I taught autistic students and was assaulted and was told I could not get my full income unless the primary-aged child was arrested. I would not do this and lost three years of retirement income. It saddens me when I drive down the street and see signs all over the neighborhood against Airbnbs, as it seems that we have done something wrong. It is our family gathering place and way for our family to secure an income while helping us to pay our bills. A teacher and postal worker's retirement income is quite limited, and we are simply attempting to augment our retirement with this home that was promised to us to provide for our family's needs. I do not feel welcome in the neighborhood despite our attention to improving the property and being a good host to guests and have place to recreate with family. Please return this promise to us and allow us to participate in the American dream. Our investment is hard-won, and losing it would be a very great loss to our family. Please also know that we were promised certain things, and we expect to live up to our responsibilities as being responsible Airbnb people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goats. Got Jana Beckner, followed by Todd Winters. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Jana Beckner, and we have been invested in the city of Louisville for the past 13 years. When we purchased our home, it was with the understanding that we were purchasing in a single-family residential neighborhood, and recently, the home almost directly across the alley was purchased as a verbo. This has been a frustration to all the neighbors that I've spoken with. I did gather several signatures of people that are in opposition of verbos in our neighborhood, because I really, no one knowingly purchases a home and expects to have a business next door that directly affects them on a daily basis, when it's zoned for single-family. We would have moved next to a hotel had we wanted to do that. This new change brought a huge concern for safety that everybody's been talking about, but not only just for our street, but the surrounding neighborhoods as well, because these people are walking up and down our streets, they're all over, you don't, we have no idea who they are, they're just strangers. I've got my children, my grandchildren, it's terrifying, I can't let them go out and play, I don't feel comfortable having them in my backyard even. They're roaming our neighborhood every week. So far, the curfew time that the owner said he imposed has never been met that we can see. You know, they're out there till 10 o'clock, one time it was 1:30 in the morning. Only supposed to be eight vehicles. Really, only eight? Well, there's been up to 10, and they're just blocking the whole front of people's mailboxes down the sides on both streets, and it's just, it's just gotten ridiculous. They are in the alleyway when I'm trying to come in and out, I can't even get into my own home. And this verbo that we have allows up to 20 people in the home at one time. This isn't a one-time gathering of family and friends during a holiday, which is understandable for anybody who owns a home, but a weekly business with continuous noise, strangers, and traffic, and it's obvious from the multiple cases of beer seen coming into the house, and a picture that I did bring for your review, of a male on the top of the house jumping off into the swimming pool, that this is a party house, that's all it is. I just can't believe, I just never heard of this before till it happened to me, which I'm sure is what happened to everybody else that had, you know, a verbo come into their home. Any home-based business should not be allowed to affect others in the neighborhood. I just, I just can't believe that it's happening across the street. Other areas have been, Dallas, Capel, Fort Worth, because of violence and crime, and we respectfully request the same. You know, sadly, our current world brings more and more violence, and we don't need the extra fear that comes from that, and it is only a matter of time before someone gets out of control and our neighborhood is affected. You know, please allow us to reside in a neighborhood that was presented as a single-family dwelling when we, in good faith, purchased our homes. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I have Todd Winters, followed by Nancy Wang.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Todd Winters, and for the past 20 years, I've lived at 1317 Robin Creek Cove here in Louisville. For reference, it's about a mile west of the Thrive Recreation Center on the southwest side of town. And for the past 18-plus months, I've been living directly across a street, the street, from a short-term rental. One, by the way, that you've already heard about this evening. That's why I proactively reached out early on to the property owner, hoping to establish a line of communication that could help mitigate any future issues. Sent him an email, didn't hear back for a month. Finally got an email response, and this person said that they were the super-host. This person was not only apologized for the lack of response, but also informed me that he was now in charge of the property. For those who don't know, an Airbnb super-host is an experienced property supervisor, someone who vets potential rentals, handles any issues, in many cases, is in charge of multiple properties. They are, excuse me, they are, in every sense of the word, managers. Homes don't have managers. Businesses do. Hotels do. And make no mistake, a short-term rental is just like a Marriott, it's just like a Hilton, it's just like a Motel 6. They all provide a place to sleep, they host different guests on a regular basis, and they're cleaned between uses. That's a hotel. Just ask the state of Texas. According to Title II of the Texas Tax Code, the state considers short-term rentals to be hotels for tax purposes. Let me repeat that. The state considers short-term rentals to be hotels for tax purposes. In this case, if it walks like a duck, and it swims like a duck, and it quacks like a duck, it's a hotel. They are not, if, if they're not hotels operating in residential areas, then why did the city of Grapevine ban them within their city limits? Fort Worth did the same thing. STRs are now banned in their residential districts. In Dallas, that city council, by a vote of 12 to 3, banned all short-term rentals in neighborhoods with single-family homes just a few months ago. Are we Grapevine? Are we Fort Worth? Are we Dallas? No, we are Louisville, and we do as we see fit for our community. But, Mr. Mayor, it does beg one very simple question. What do they know that we don't? To be clear, I am not advocating for an outright ban on short-term rentals within our city limits. It is my understanding they should still be legally allowed in mixed-use commercial and/or industrial districts. In fact, you will not find a stronger proponent for homeowner rights than me. You should be able to do whatever you want to do with your property, right up to the point where your actions negatively affect me, my neighbors, our neighborhoods, and our quality of life. We have zoning regulations in specific districts for a reason, to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of our city. But if we continue to allow these short-term hotels to operate within zones designated exclusively for single-family residences, then why have zoning regulations at all? These are buildings, these are businesses. These are businesses hiding in our neighborhoods, they're hiding in plain sight, and they are hiding among us. It's not- It's not right. It's time for that to change and y'all have the power to do that. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your time and consideration. Go Rangers.
I have Nancy Wang followed by David Margulies.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. My name is Nancy Wang. My address is 1113 Firewater Circle. We have, my husband and I have a short-term rental at that address. Our short-term rental started in May of this year, about five months now. The majority of our guests are families visiting their families in Lewisville or families vacationing in DFW. We also had a Lewisville family stayed for a week while their home was having plumbing work. We had multiple church groups who came to work with local churches. And there was a teacher who came to a Lewisville ISD workshop, brought her children and grandchildren. A Michigan lady rented our home so she could thank her daddy's labors for helping her daddy when he had a stroke. So you can see, our guests are just normal Americans, American families and American workers, no party people. We are very proud of our home. The home was, when we acquired it, the home was in a, not a good shape. There is even no flooring covering inside, no matter, you can imagine how outside was maintained. We put significant time, money, tears and sweat towards it. Now, it is one of the most beautiful on the block. We are also proud, our STR helped our wonderful cleaning ladies. She has an autistic, autistic, autistic child. Sometimes she brought him with her while she cleans and the child even helps. A hotel cleaning job will not offer that flexibility for her. We respect our laborhood to prevent parties. It happens sometimes. We expect that and we have many measures in place to prevent that or and intervene immediately. For example, we have strict house rules, not allow the parties, not allow visitors. And we have a limit of how many guests we can accommodate and how many cars we can have and we instruct them not to park in the street. Even parking in the street is not illegal, but we ask them just parking in our driveway. And also we have outside cameras, security cameras, so we can monitor their behaviors so we can enforce our house rules if we find something. And also we have inside, outside decibel, noise level monitor. So if we heard something over some certain threshold, we will get notified and we can immediately intervene. And we, we ordered extra garbage, garbage cart so we don't have overflowing trash. And we also, yeah, that's, that's, that's some of the measures we, we place in to prevent the parties. We also understand that there are bad apples in short-term rentals, not every short-term owners are responsible ones. But we also believe there are bad apples in homeowner-occupied homes or long-term rentals, like the other speakers earlier mentioned. You know, long-term people, they have SWAT team come over and some other places. It's not a short-term rentals, they also bring SWATs. But we haven't heard about Louisville or short-term rentals have any shots, gunshots or murders or anything. So what I'm trying to say, so those concerns is true, the noise, the parking, the traffic, the, the strangers on the street, they are issues, they are troubles, they are not desired for our, our Louisville resident. But they are not the only problem for, for short terms. It could be long-term, could be home-occupied. So there's no evidence showing STR bring more troubles than other homes. We respectfully ask City of Lewisville, please crack down the bad houses. No matter it is short-term rental or a long-term rental or a home occupied. Wiping out the short-term rental will not solve the problem. This problem will still be here. Just crack down the problems. As short-term rental owners, we welcome guidance and reasonable regulations. And we pledge to run our short-term rentals under city's regulations and with great respect to our labors. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you Ms. Wang. I have David Margulies followed by James Massey.
Mayor and Council, first, thank you for taking the time to listen to this. We'll be sending you a recording of the noise from the house you just heard about in the, by email tomorrow. We provided it to all the local news media also. San Juan, Taipei, Portugal, Barcelona, Amsterdam, Plano, Dallas, South Lake and Austin are all doing exactly what you're doing. They're trying to deal with the problem of short-term rentals. So this idea that it's a few bad apples is complete BS. Because everyone in the world, New York City, Dallas, all of these places are dealing with the same problems that you heard about here. This idea that it's, oh, it's all just a few guys and it's no big deal, that is not true. The other measure that, and, and I've worked in city government for 35 years. The other measure that also is, is not correct is how many times people have called 911. Most people respect the police, don't call them when there's nothing they can do about it. In the Dallas survey, most Dallas residents have no idea what 311 is, much less whether they should call it. So you don't have to wait until somebody, it needs police protection to, to make it a problem. That's, that's not the case either. The city of Arlington, very forward-thinking city, great city manager, has passed an ordinance, a well-reasoned, well-thought-out ordinance that has stood up in court. And I urge you to look, look at it, I believe we've sent it to most of you. There are several other cities that have ordinances that, that have been tested in court and then courts have not overturned that deal with these types of problems. So the first thing I would ask on behalf of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition is that you have a moratorium on new short-term rentals. They went up 96% in the last three years. Other cities all around you are curtailing them. And if you don't do that, you are going to be the short-term cap, rental capital of the world. And you don't want that. Trust me, that's not what you want on your city logo. So the first thing you can do without shutting them all down is to have a moratorium and say until we get an ordinance, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna have anymore. The second thing is we'd urge your very able city attorney to meet with the attorneys for the Texas Neighborhood Coalition, who are experts on this. Former corporate counsel from a major company who can, who can walk you through what's legal, what's not legal, what other courts have decided. And in other instances where we work with government agencies on other types of issues, we always try to collaborate with them and come up with an ordinance and provide them with some expertise and advice. Now, when you talk about short-term rentals such as the one that the lady just talked about, her rental says it will sleep 16 to 18 people, which means that in a year, if it's just rented on weekends, you will have over 800 different people visiting your neighborhood. If you have a house that only rents six bedrooms a year, you know, just on weekends, that's over 300 strangers visiting your neighborhoods. That's really not what single-family residence means. That's not what people look for, that's not what they expect when they buy a home that is a single-family resident. That's not, the plain, simple language says it's for single-family homes. It's not for somebody to use as a holiday inn. And the only difference between a short-term rental and a holiday inn is they don't have the breakfast buffet. Otherwise, it's the exact same thing. And Councilman Cade, you made a very good point about nobody's been shot yet. Well, unfortunately, we were some of the people who responded to the Allen Mall shooting. And I'll tell you one quick story and I'll stop. When I was a journalist before I did this, in the city of Dallas, we had a problem with ambulances. And like a good journalist, I pointed out that they didn't have enough ambulances. And I documented it, did all the things you do as a reporter. And when nobody did anything about it, their answer was, nobody has died yet. Well, when the lady died, then it was on the CPS Evening News. And unfortunately, her son called the competitor, so they won the Pulitzer Prize of TV News. But the fact is, we don't want to wait till somebody gets shot.
No, we don't.
This is common sense and I know you don't.
And I just want to clarify what I said because I did not say that no one's got shot yet. I said that an STR call for service has not happened.
Right.
Okay, on that, but the other, it was.
Right, no, I understand. It hasn't happened yet, but God forbid that it does. Then you'll, then you'll be on the national news and people will say, why didn't you do anything? So this is a great opportunity to put a moratorium on it. We can help you come up with a workable, reasonable ordinance that will pass muster in court and will address the issues that I, other people have been much more eloquent than I have in explaining. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna put a pause on this and take about a five-minute bio break just because everybody in here might, might need a breather. So my apologies, Mr. Massey, I'm gonna put the pause right in front of you. But we're gonna take just a five-minute recess and we'll be right back here, 7:04. We're gonna call this meeting back to order. Thank you all for your patience. I have Mr. James Massey followed by Xin Zhang. Mr. Massey, name and address for the record.
Me and my wife have owned a short-term rental, me and my wife own a short-term rental in Lewisville. We've owned the property for over 10 years and raise our kids, our kids in the home. As my family grew, we decided to move, but we didn't want to sell the property. Short-term renting was appealing because it gave us a flexibility to still use the property and allows me to properly maintain it. I know most people here, short-term rental, and they think party house. Well, that's not the case with our property. We have extremely strict house rules and we will not book to any guests that could potentially disturb our neighbors. I will not bore you with all our house rules and pre-screening process, but I'll just say it works. We've had guests that range from families in town for church conventions, firefighters in town for training, several families that have been displaced from their homes due to water damage and military families that are moving back to Texas from overseas. From my perspective, most guests are just looking for a home away from home and that's what short-term rentals provide. I'll end by saying I do understand that not all short-term rentals are managed like ours. Inevitably, you will have owners that prioritize making money over their neighbors. I think the city of Lewisville should approach short-term rentals similar to the city of Irving. Irving requires short-term rentals to be registered so bad property managers do not negatively impact our neighborhood. I'll also add that I've, I've recognized some people that have spoke on the topic and have claimed to worry about their grandkids. Well, their grandkids are actually friends with people who have rented our house, short-term rentals, to this day. So it's not all bad. It can be good if it's managed correctly. And so I think that that's really what this all comes down to, bad property managers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Massey, I'm sorry, before you go, I couldn't get my mic on in time, I'm sorry. So how long have you owned an STR?
It's two years now.
Two years now, okay.
We lived in it for eight years, raised our kids and then, so two years now we've been doing it.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just like she mentioned, we have cameras all over our house, friends with all of my neighbors. They all know, our HOA knows, we've talked, we're friends with the board. So we're not hiding anything, we're embedded in our community and we want to make sure that we don't tick anybody off.
Okay, it's only two years. Have you ever had any, any issues at all?
No, we, we have direct contact with all of our neighbors, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just think it's funny to hear somebody say they're worried about their grandkids, but they're actually friends with people who stayed at our property.
Sure, thank you.
It's very, very interesting. Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. They're five and nine, so.
Xin Zhang and then I've got Clara Domtey on deck. Name and address, please.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Xin Zhang and my husband and I have one Airbnb, 1713 Shelly Creek, Lewisville. We had this property for about 10 years and it was a long-term rental before September last year. And we converted to Airbnb since last year, September. So our Airbnb is about a year old. So over the past nine years, when it was a long-term rental, we feel that it was not well taken care of by some of our tenants. So we put through this property through a major renovation after our tenant moved out last year and converted to Airbnb. So we have hired local contractors for this renovation. So we feel that we have contributed to local community in terms of providing some jobs. We have scheduled the lawn cares and since the property was converted to Airbnb and I can say it is much better maintained compared to the past. Most of our Airbnb guests have some rules in Lewisville or local area. For example, we have host the families whose house went through major renovation, so they stay with us. And we have host relatives of the families in the neighborhood. So one of the cases is our neighbor's daughter is getting married. So he has rented our property for the guests to attending his daughter's wedding. So we also host grandparents who attend grandson's graduation at UNT and many families whose son and daughter graduate from UNT, so stayed with us. And church groups, et cetera. Our number one rule on our listing is, to our guests, is we ask them to be respectful to our neighbors. We communicated to our guests at the time of booking that we want to make sure that our neighbors are not disturbed. Our goal, as indicated in our listing, is we want to keep our guests and our neighbor both happy. And we have our rules for outdoor quiet time, which is after 10:00 PM, you know, to 8:00 AM in the morning. We have a maximum number of parking spot listed in our rule and we tell our guests where to park and where specifically not to park, which is our neighbor's parking spot. Okay, so we also have driveways and they can park. We have turned down booking requests that need more parking spots. And we also turned down many booking requests that wants to host events in our property. So we have surveillance devices monitoring district parking, which is two spot allowed. And we also has monitored the driveway and monitored the cash bean, trash bean, not cash bean, as well as the outdoor noise. So when there's a problem, we point it out to our guests to make sure they comply with the rules. Most of the time, you only have guests that stay during the weekend. Often, they dining out in the local restaurants. So the trash from their stay typically is less compared to a family stay there for the whole week. That's my experience. So I have not aware of any complaints in terms of trash, parking, noise to my Airbnb. I have not aware of any 911 calls to my Airbnb, okay? So bottom line, I do feel that our Airbnb is contributing to the city of Lewisville. Through hosting local families when their home is under renovation, when families, family or family's friend coming visiting, we provide jobs to local contractors and contributing by keeping up the, our property beautiful. And one of the very important thing is I feel that we're showcase the great city of Lewisville and it's friendly family neighbors to our guests. So as an Airbnb host, so both my husband and I would feel that we are part of this community. And we are doing good for this community and we are contributing to the community. So short-term rental should be allowed and I support regulation to weed out the bad host and bad-run Airbnbs. So responsible host and responsible Airbnb should be allowed. Also want to take one minute, share some of my personal story in terms of. I also want to take one minute and share some of my personal story in terms of crime. The only two times I see police car is all around my own neighborhood. It's not from any short-term rental, not from any long-term rental. It's from my neighbors. So one of the cases 15 years ago, a young man, I think...
I'm going to have to stop you there.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
All right.
Clara Domte, followed by Michael Fry.
Hi, good evening. My name is Clara Domte, and I work for a management company that represents 2305 Clearview Court. STRs are much more than party houses. They provide housing solutions for people in various circumstances. Just a couple of examples are hospital-long treatments, a place to stay while your own house is being repaired, and much more. As a management company, we feel like we are taking measures in the right directions. We have noise-monitoring devices. We limit the number of cars. We conduct screening and background checks. We are counting the numbers of people entering the property, and we keep monitoring it during their whole stay. We do have minimum three-night stay. We do not rent out our pool, and we don't allow parties. We keep and maintain the property, and we make sure it's well-preserved. We care about our neighbors. We contact our neighbors, and we are making sure they know they have someone to speak to in case of need. I'm also a part of the Plano Task Force. We are having monthly meetings in order to find a common ground. Plano compared and presented the numbers on various subjects, and the percentage of issues caused by STR were minor. I urge the city of Lewisville to do the same if you didn't already, so the people will learn the actual facts.
And, well, go ahead, because these two are neighbors, actually, so...
My name is Jim Hughes. I live at 1018 Forest Park Drive, Lewisville. And my family moved here in 1972. And other than me and Ronnie, we're probably two of the oldest Lewisville residents around these parts. Grew up with Ronnie, known her since fifth grade, and Jackie, I've known Jackie too since the 1970s. But I just want to say that I'm against short-term rentals, wholeheartedly, because I go out in my driveway, and there's three houses that are short-term rentals. And often, there's no problem. But I just want to tell you one thing that happened this weekend. Friday evening, when you're tired from the week, my doorbell rings, and I go to the door, and there's some folks that say, "I've rented, we've rented this STR across the street, and we have three trailers to our trucks. We're here for a car show, and we have no place to park our trailers. What should we do?" And I'm a nice guy, so I said, "I don't care if you park all your cars all along my property. That's fine. Don't park within 10-foot of a mailbox. And the city council has told us that if there's any violations, we're going to take pictures, and they will send it, we will send it to the police, and it will be turned in." And I was real nice about it, and they said, "Thank you very much for the warning. We're going to try to move those trailers, but we may not be able to." And I said, "But the cul-de-sac over there is open, you know? That's a place you might could park, because it's out of everybody's way." And they said, "Thank you." And they were very nice. And they appreciated that. And I've visited with other people that stayed at Timmy's house, you know, and had lots of good fun conversations with the people. But there are those times that there's, I don't want to have to deal with things like Friday night. I had to go out there, and I had to tell them, you know, "I'm basically having to be the policeman. Don't park within 10-foot of a mailbox. Park along the curb. Pictures are going to be taken. Send to the police." You know, I shouldn't have to do that. And the more, there's going to be more STRs that are going to happen. And just right after that, one of my neighbors across the street that's next door to that place got a, someone came to his door, they went to his door and said, "Can we park our trailer in your yard?" Who, what can, how do you, why would you do that? You know, that's just horrible. We shouldn't have to deal with things like that. I'm afraid he's going to die of a heart attack. Seriously. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we have to put up with from time to time. And it's not all the time. I talk to a lot of them from time to time, you know? But I don't want them, because I'm tired of it. I'm in a rock band called Vintage LP. LP is not just Long Valley, it's Lake Park. LP is for Lake Park. And all of our band members or family members of the band members all grew up around the Oak Ridge part of town or had family and friends there. And I've always wanted to live in this neighborhood. And I told my wife, and we got married, "Someday, we're going to live in that neighborhood up there." And so it came about that we were able to. And I don't want to have to move because of all the STRs. And there's going to be more come if we don't do something about it. So I urge you guys to make the right choice. I know you will. But I appreciate you guys dealing with this hard, this subject. But I do want to say, the house that she represents, Goldnest, across the street, I've never once had an issue with their property. When they, when that owner bought that property, they sent us a charcuterie board and a letter that said, "I'm turning your property into a, this property I bought, just bought, I'm turning it into an STR, and this is the management company that's going to manage it. And if you ever have a problem, you call that number, and we will take care of it." And we've never had to call it, ever. The only problem is, a few times, I've noticed, I thought it might be a wet-sick house at one time, because some of the first renters were driving down our street, 100 miles an hour, it seemed like, and zipped in, got in the garage. But other than that, that house has been the prime example of what they could be. And never have there been lots of cars at that one.
Jim, thank you.
But anyway, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Did you have any additional comment?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Got Michael Fry, followed by Ken Wharton.
My name is Mike Fry. I live at 1420 Sun Swept Terrace. I had some notes, but everybody's already covered my notes. But I have noticed one thing. I'd just like to bring up two issues. One thing, the people that are making money off of short-term rentals are all in favor of it, and the people that aren't are not in favor of it. You can sort out that however you want to. But one of the issues that I have, last spring, they were doing some work on the house next door, because the young couple that had lived there, that were renting it from the man that owned it, that lived in New York City, they moved out and was able to buy a house. And I noticed something written on the side of the van, so I went over and looked at the van, and it was Airbnb. Well, we haven't had any issues. Nobody ever contacted us. But it's generally weekend rentals. You say, "Okay." The house sits vacant all week long. Security cameras in our alley, we have alley entrance, security cameras pick up teenagers walking up and down the alleys. Sometimes they're messing with the cars trying to get in. But anyway, the fence on this rental has a gate that slides sideways, and it's the only entrance into the backyard. Well, they've kept up the yards very good, better than the people that lived there before. But the only way they can get in is through that gate. So they've decided to leave that gate open all the time. This gate's been open all summer long, and I didn't realize it, because we go out this way, but another neighbor goes by the gate, says the gate's been open all the time. There's a swimming pool in that backyard. And I know we have ordinances about open fencing around pools. So you folks have a task, a very difficult task. I grew up, the son of a city councilman and mayor pro temp. And many times, my mother and I would eat dinner at the table, and my dad would be sitting in there on the phone trying to solve problems, because the city just wasn't doing it the way they thought they ought to have done. You probably spent some of those evenings, too. And we do appreciate you. I'm glad to see who I voted for. This is the first time I've come to a council meeting, and I recognize some of these names. And we do appreciate you. We appreciate all that you're having to go through now. There's got to be regulations. I can't open a burger shop in my house, but I am in favor of property rights. The previous owner of our house developed a business in the house until the IRS took the house over. So just to say we're in favor of free enterprise, the more freedoms we have, the more opportunities we have to control freedom, in a sense that benefits everybody. It doesn't stop us from doing things, but it sets rules. And we all need some rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ken Wharton, followed up by James Treadway.
Mayor Council, my name is Ken Wharton. We live at 2020 Briar Cliff Road in Lewisville. We came from San Diego about 12 years ago, back when the Chargers used to belong to San Diego. And I hope they get beat tonight by the Cowboys. Anyway, we followed our son here to retire, and we were very selective in the neighborhood that we picked. We have wonderful neighbors. Everybody takes care of their yards and all of that. And the neighbors next to us had two kids that went through the Lewisville High School, and they told us a couple of years ago, they'd, once their kids graduated from high school and college, they would be moving north to Denton, which they did do. And they sold the house to new owners. And the new owners are nice to us, but the thing we noticed immediately was added cars. We asked the neighbors, "What's going on here?" They didn't know. Eventually, I talked to the new owners, and they said they were operating a Airbnb there. They live there. And I guess we don't see the party that some short-terms have. But parking is a big issue. And we get along good. We talk about the care of the yard, especially with all the heat that we recently had this summer. But there's a lot of clutter in the yard, a lot of cars. I would say usually there's seven or eight cars. It's a, I think it's a four-bedroom house. We're used, the previous owners had four adults, so they had four cars. And we occasionally see a car out on the curb, but most of the time, they kept them in the garage and in the driveway. And so what we see now is they, our neighbors have a large boat that we see in the driveway. He's operating in some kind of AC heating business, so we see business vans out there. But the biggest problem is, sometimes they park in front of our house, but there's a lot of congestion with cars. Parking is our big problem. And as long as they live there, I think we feel reasonably safe. We don't have the partying, like I said. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wharton? I'm sorry, Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
Before you go, I'm sorry, can you, I'm just curious, what's your stance? I couldn't tell really if you're pro, against, with regulations. Could you clarify for me?
We want some control.
Okay.
What we're concerned about is that the added cars is going to diminish our values in our neighborhood. And like I said, we get along good with the new people, but we see strangers come and go, and...
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
So it's safe to say that you want a minimum set of standards?
Yes, yes. I think they're, you know, right, right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Treadway, and then I've got Gary Davis on deck. Name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. James Treadway, 1318 Robin Creek Cove. I am not from New York. I am not an out-of-state owner, but I am an Airbnb owner. Born in Fort Worth, lived here, lived in Metroplex for 50 years now. And I just want to touch on something that's been kind of danced around a little bit, but I just want to, you know, it's a term that many people are probably familiar with called FUD, F-U-D. And for those that haven't heard it, it stands for fear, uncertainty, and doubt. It's a tactic used by one group of people to attempt to change the minds or manipulate another group of people, a broader group of people, right? And it's a tactic that's been around since before I was born, but to be, you know, to be perfectly honest, it rarely tells the story of the full truth. And sometimes it gets wildly exaggerated, right? I'll give you an example of that. The hotel industry has started TV ads that would portray an Airbnb house as a dark, unkempt, scary, haunted house with toy dolls that would terrorize the guest. That's fear. That's a fear tactic, right? There is not an Airbnb on this planet that matches that description. Another fear tactic is, you know, what you see sometimes in the media and with these coalitions. I mean, I'm looking at this Texas Neighborhood Coalition's website, and it uses terms like weapons, drugs, violence, you know, as Councilwoman Kate pointed out, and Chief has as well. There isn't much of that. I'm not trying to diminish it. I'm not trying to say that it doesn't exist. I'm just saying, let's, can we please look at the math? But I mean, it's not only drugs, violence, guns, but it says on their website, "It's a scourge, like a cancer in your neighborhoods. Act now before the cancer kills the city." So if I'm to believe this coalition, if I'm on the fence and I'm reading this, why wouldn't I act? Man, I'm behind them. I don't want to see the total destruction of the city of Lewisville. So I just want to caution the council and those on the fence and the cities and the residents of Lewisville, you know, not to be, to look at all the facts. I think there was a speaker before me that called for, you know, an assessment of how many negative things are happening, right? I mean, there are negative things that happen. But for every one of those, there's thousands, across the globe, millions of people who have reservations, and they're just like the stories we've heard before, where it's just, you know, folks getting in town to attend their daughter's wedding or something, you know? So there are a lot of good reservations that happen. And we're hearing from a lot of negative stories tonight, and I've been moved by some of them, and I respect everyone in this room, but, you know, you're not hearing any. Well, you're hearing some, but you're not hearing of the vast number of positive things, you know, from the meticulous maintenance on lawns to the fact that sometimes Airbnb owners buy distressed houses and rent over them. It brings up the value of the neighborhood. I heard from two of my own neighbors tonight, and during the break, I tried to catch them. You know, I've met them both before, and I've given them both my phone number. They have it. I asked them, "How come you didn't call me? Do you have my number?" "Yeah, I'm here." One of them, Todd, who lives at 1317, I mean, this is hearsay. I don't know how the council chambers work or anything, but we talked in the lobby there, and he said if he could stay, he had to go somewhere, but if he could stay, he'd walk up here and vouch for my property, because I do think I'm one of the good managers. And I think that's, you know, there are bad managers. And so in any case, I think it comes down to management or owners or, you know, talking to their neighbors and telling them, "Hey, we want to be a good neighbor. The minute we're not, I don't want to do this anymore." So, you know, I know you guys will do the right thing, and if a decision is made to pass regulations, then I will obey. Thank you.
Mr. Treadway, sorry, before you go off. Mr. Treadway, I'm sorry, before you go off. How long have you owned, you own one Airbnb, is that right? One rental?
I own one rental in Lewisville. I own three.
Okay.
I'm not a slumlord. I own them all, and I manage them all. I don't pay anybody else.
I'm just trying to get a picture. And you've had, how many, do you have any problems with any of them? Have you ever had any problem beside what maybe somebody ancillary just said to you in the lobby out there?
I did rent to a young group of men who were selling solar panels. I don't know if you remember that story. And they brought more trucks than I thought they would, and they were all F-250, massive. And they did take up a lot of space. But I had a conversation with Chris at 1320, second day they were there. And we talked about it, and I told him, I said, "I'm going to tell them to park somewhere else, maybe down the other side where the trees are, where there's no houses. They're here." You know? They were, you know, church-going, young 20-somethings that weren't sitting in front of a freaking video game. They were working. Okay? It was awesome.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Gary Davis?
Yes.
And I have Roy Opel.
My name is Gary Davis. Thank you, Mayor. 550 Harvest Hill. I'm speaking in favor of STRs. There's been a lot of passion on both sides tonight. Would just like to say, I think if the city and the council is going to make a decision about this, they really need to base it off of data. And that data, I think, honestly should come from the police department in terms of looking at long-term rentals versus short-term rentals. If a decision is made to eliminate short-term rentals, there's a huge population. I hope that everybody on the council has already looked, you know, Airbnb.com and looked at all the different properties that exist, because if it is terminated, those properties... Because if it is terminated, those properties are not going to disappear. And I doubt most of us owners are going to just turn around and sell it and dump it. So it's probably going to become a long-term rental. And so do we have any statistics from the police department that can say, this is the number of incidents that we have from long-term rentals versus short-term rentals? Because that's the way I would evaluate it. I had, before I converted some of mine to, I have more than one. I have two in Wichita Falls, I had three in Lewisville, I have one out of the country. And I have over 2,000 stays. And I can tell you, I have had nightmare stories when I first started. And I think that's what the key is, is that a lot of people get into this, and they, you know, it's a new business model, and they're trying to look at it. And honestly, right around the pandemic, there was a lot of kids that were trying to stay in short-term rentals and trying to have parties because they were cooped up. And I did. I kicked some kids out at 2:00 in the morning, 50 kids that got into a duplex. And, but I learned to control it. And I think less restriction, less regulation, let business owners be business owners. I see the shirts that say, homes, not hostels or hotels. I get that. But the reality is, you've got a population of houses out there that just because it's eliminated, they're going to be renters. And I can tell you, I had a lot where long-term rentals, because they never told me about problems, they didn't take care of yards, and it's hard to get rid of a long-term renter. And with a short-term rental, every now and then, you would have probably somebody that has more than two cars, which I have a restriction. My recommendation is that everybody on the council, just go look at descriptions. If you see the one that is the meanest in terms of you're going to stay at my place, that's probably mine. Because I say, if you're going to do this, if you're a Karen, if you're doing this, do not rent for me. And because I'm not going to put up with it. There's no three strikes and you're out. If, because if I have somebody on the street call me, but I try to be a good neighbor. And I think that's the key. It's not regulation. And if you've heard, most of the people here tonight, I've heard two addresses primarily that were brought up over and over again. Why not have those neighborhoods create an HOA and let it be run that way? There's already HOAs that exist in the city that say you can't have an Airbnb. Why does the city have to get involved in that? That's it.
Thank you, sir. Got Roy Opel, followed by Thomas Conrad. Name and address, please, sir.
Roy Opel, address 1537 Elica Court. And thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for listening to everyone and speaking just in favor of or for Airbnbs, that not all Airbnbs are bad and not all are good either. And we try as a host to be good hosts and taking care of our neighborhoods. Most people that stay with our homes are either on a business trip, a wedding gathering, or family reunion, or going to a sporting event, or just a family vacation. And we try to always, you know, we always let them know that, you know, there's a city noise curfew for our neighborhood, that, you know, by 9:30, they need to bring all their visiting inside so that they respect the sleep of the neighbors. And we always question, you know, who's going to be staying there and what the purpose of the rental is, so that we make sure that they're not there to, you know, invite, you know, college kids over for a party. And just communicating with our clients is going to be, is one of the things that we can do to mitigate issues with our neighbors and with the stay. We're open to registering with the city so that we have accountability with the city. We're open to, if it'll make it a more legitimate item of the hotel tax. And we want to definitely try to always communicate with our neighbors to know how things are going in the neighborhood. Yep, that's pretty much about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas Conrad, followed by Sharlena Rena. Mr. Conrad, going once, going twice. And I don't have whether for or against, so. Sharlena Rena? Jeff Woods. Calling Mr. Woods, I've got Gary Schlett.
My name is Jeff Woods. I live at 1001 Forest Park Drive. There has been a lot of passion that's been expressed here on both sides tonight. I would just like to point out that we keep hearing that these STR owners are our neighbors. They are not our neighbors, even though they've identified that they live at these properties. When they were asked their address, they do not recite at these properties. And that, you know, it's still, I haven't heard anything from STR owners tonight that would say how they are benefiting the neighborhood. All I've heard is how they're benefiting their own pocketbook, how they will be paying taxes and registering. But as far as the neighbors that are concerned with these short-term rentals in their neighborhoods, I haven't heard anywhere where they have been, how they're going to resolve these issues. I haven't, there's not been a person up here tonight that has been given a cue card on what to read. Every one of the emotions that you've heard tonight came from each individual owner, and this is what they've encountered, this is the experiences. And this has been passed down. This is no secret. This has been passed down from city to city to city with the same problems, the same issues with short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods. Am I opposed to short-term rentals where it's owner-occupied or anything like that? As it was intended to be for the purpose? Not at all. But it has evolved now into where it is unregulated lodging in a single-family neighborhoods is what the result is. And because it still leaves, when do we get these complaints or whatever? It still leaves the neighbors that have to police the neighborhoods. As several people said, I mean, it's still the ones that live in fear. And that was a big common denominator that you heard from several people about letting their children out and whatnot. And me, as a result, for me, that's, I'm exhausted from this. And I know that y'all have a big burden on your shoulders. I know that y'all are doing what you can, going through all the regulations, going through all the other cities that have passed, whatever it is, how to regulate them. It definitely is something that needs to be addressed, and I know that all of you are on top of it. I have no concern about that whatsoever. But the only way to actually resolve any of the concerns that the homeowners, just like our taxes, as somebody had mentioned earlier, our tax rates have gone up because they came in and bought these homes at a higher rate. But we can't sell them at a market value for what they're at, because nobody wants to live close to a short-term rental. You could say, well, you don't have to disclose that. Well, I wouldn't do that to somebody else. I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't sell a house and say, hey, I want you to know, even if it's not on the seller's disclosure from the Texas Real Estate Commission, I wouldn't do that to somebody else. This is the battle where we're in. I feel trapped, or I really do, because we're funding them now because we're having to pay higher taxes, and would be funding them on the back end if we had to sell our house and had to sell it for a loss. I feel trapped of where I'm at. I've lived in Lewisville for 56 years. And, you know, I'm just, I'm tired. I'm exhausted from this. And I feel for my neighbors. I feel for the neighborhoods. I feel for the people that got up here. A lot of people got up here tonight and spoke that wouldn't normally speak and wouldn't have, and may not call, you know, in times of distress. And I really feel that way. And I know that y'all are doing everything that you can. I'm just asking for your, you know, the only way to really resolve all this is to meet the needs of the 130,000 people of your constituents is, that's the most concern. I know that the poll is out, that most people oppose short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods. I remember when Dallas voted on banning short-term rentals, they had 100 people show up. Of a million population, they had 100 people show up tonight. I mean, show up that night. I believe tonight, we exceeded not 100 people, but in the ratio-wise, you know, that's a huge concern for a lot of people. And I haven't heard that tonight where it would be, where the relief would come for the existing homeowners, because we're still left to police the neighborhoods week in and week out. And I know that, okay, well, it's going to, after three strikes, they're out. It's still going to take the homeowners to file those complaints or around there, file those complaints or reports in order for those to be generated. So thank you for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Schlett and Jennifer Swope on deck. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Gary Schledy. I've been here for about 40 years. And I live in 2027 Wanderlust Drive in Lewisville, in Yanox Estates. And we have just found out recently, I got this letter, it says, oh, you've got a rental property or something, or something like that. And, you know, I was surprised. But what is the major disadvantage of owning rental property? Very quickly, does rental property deliver, devalue current homes? That's the big worry of homeowners, devaluing your home. And the drawback of having rental properties include a lack of liquidity. The cost of upkeep and the potential for difficult tenants and for the neighborhood appeal to decline. That's what happens. And you want a city that is not declining. So if you don't want this city to decline, you maintain some type of quality to your homes and that. And one thing, and I don't know if I should ask this, but I would be curious how many people that sit, that work in the city had experience with these rental properties. And I was wondering, I was wondering if, you know, they're owners or anything. I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying. But the fact is, it is a disadvantage to the city, and yeah, that's the biggest thing I can say. We've been very fortunate in 2027 Wanderlust Drive in all these years. It's one of the best places to live. And what happened, and I guess brought this about, one of the people that lives toward the end of the city moved, and this truck moved up. Some truck pulled up one day and start working inside the house. And he's still working in there. I don't know what he's doing. And I think that's where I reasonably got the letter, thinking that was going to be a rental property. At this point, I don't know. I just know the trucks parked there, and periodically, he goes in and works on the house, because it's got a beautiful yard and so forth. So I would think if the city wants to keep the value of homes, that they would disregard the fact that rental properties are a benefit. They are really a negative for the city. So basically, that's all I have to say. I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Schledy.
So I'll let everyone else go. I was just saying.
Appreciate your input. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Jennifer Swope, followed by Gary Op broker. I hope I got that right, Gary. I'll know in a few minutes. Jennifer, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Swope. I helped him with Clearview Court, and I clean for him. I do really kind of anything that he needs help with throughout the whole process of all the renting. And coming from my experience as a cleaner, I go in after they leave, and I do not and have not, in the six months that I've worked for him, come across anything as far as like destruction to the property. You're going to get, I feel like, a lot of the situations that have been brought up about the not knowing the people that are there, you're going to get that, your neighbors are going to have company come over, you know, at your house, you have, your company come over. I, at my house, have neighbors that own their house and refuse to park in the driveway or in front of their house. They park in front of my house. I mean, and they're not, they're not an Airbnb. I'm not an Airbnb. It's my house and their house. And so I think that you're going to get that everywhere throughout the city. It's just happens to be that that's what this is labeled.
Gary, and then I've got Lauren Billings on deck. Name and address for the record, please.
My scribble.
Sorry about that, Gary.
Mr. Mayor, I live at 111 Firewater Circle. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your ongoing work and acknowledgement of the need to address the short-term rental issue in Lewisville. A gentleman mentioned fear, uncertainty, and doubt recently. That's what we live with and have been living with for the past three or four months since the property next door turned into a short-term rental. Sleeps 18 in a single-family residential neighborhood. I've written a long story, but the heart of the argument is a simple one. Short-term rentals are essentially hotels, and hotels are not appropriate for single-family residential neighborhoods. These neighborhoods are meant to provide a peaceful and stable living environment for our residents. And the continuous presence of short-term rentals disrupts the tranquility, especially these large-capacity lodgings with sleeping for over eight people. This increases safety risks, and we have the fear, uncertainty, and doubt every week, whenever we get home on a Friday, are we going to have another destroyed weekend where there's continuous noise? I previously presented an example, just one of many, of the noise that we experienced at 1:00 AM in the morning a couple of weeks ago. This issue has been going on for multiple months, the same violations. We face sometimes week-long parties that happen at these properties, noise and other illicit activities. As residents, we deserve to enjoy our homes without being subjected to disruptions caused by transient visitors who do not care for the neighborhood. We had an incident a couple of weeks ago. A gentleman was walking around the neighborhood with a beer in one hand and a cigarette in the other hand, and he was saying, he came here because he couldn't get rentals in Dallas. So obviously, there are some impacts of that ban coming through. I expect that will increase over time, and we'll be impacted more and more with certain properties benefiting. One of the issues with a moratorium on these properties is the people that are existing short-term rentals, creating problems for neighbors like us, will then benefit at the expense of us, the existing neighbors to these short-term rentals. I've previously shared some sound from the property next door, as mentioned earlier. As a summary, some options that may help with updating our zoning ordinance to specify where short-term rentals can and cannot operate, similar to what Arlington has done successfully. There's other options that various people have brought forward to us today, and I think in principle, we know that there needs to be regulations on these properties. We personally are struggling with this. The fear, uncertainty, and doubt that we live with on a daily and weekly basis is starting to affect us significantly. And I think all neighbors in our area can attest to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lauren Billings, followed by Mary Witherspoon. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Lauren Billings. I live at 1008 Vancouver Drive. I'm grateful to be here. Thank you for listening to me, and thank you, everyone here who has said a lot of things. You know, I came in with one argument, and I've heard so many different things that I, you know, I've written back and forth, and I have so many different things to say, but I only get five minutes, so what are you going to do? So I want to start with kind of an ethical argument. Across from me, 1007 Vancouver Drive is a short-term rental. Across from me, one zero zero seven Vancouver Drive is a short-term rental. And it doesn't actually bother me, except for the fact that it's seven hundred feet within the front doors of Huffin, Huffine's Middle School. But that part bothers me because that ethically doesn't make sense. Like, why would we just have random people who can come in and out, be so close to a school? And by the way, why would you rent that house? The main road right there is always congested, like especially in the morning and right at four thirty when all the kids are trying to get to school and out of school. It doesn't make any sense. Also, that home should be reserved for somebody who actually has a family, who should take their kids to school. So it, they're kind of denying someone who might need that, who wants to have a family. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It also doesn't go with Lewisville's twenty twenty-five mission. You guys actually have it stated on your website, your long-term plan is to give Lewisville a place to thrive. How are we thriving if we just have a bunch of random people come in and who are just living short-term, like deep roots? I don't know about any plant that can grow roots in a weekend. I mean, maybe there's a few, but not any that you want. Logically, I've heard the quote, let businesses be businesses. Yeah, I guess you could say a short-term rental is a business, but I'm gonna be honest, I'm a business owner in Allen, the Dinosaur Company Billings Productions. I build life-size animatronic dinosaurs. I don't consider any of these people business owners because they didn't go through what I had to go through. I had to approach the EDC, ask for approvals, get my land. I go through permits, I file my nine forty-ones quarterly, I do a lot for my community, I promote other small businesses, I donate to other charities, I do a lot of outreach for children, adults, all sorts of people. What do these businesses do? Did they ever ask the residents what we wanted? Did they ever ask, like, how we felt with them being here? Did they ask what we wanted or how we felt of them bringing people in? Which, by the way, I don't know if you saw Airbnb or Verbo's, um, security policies, but Airbnb, I believe it was mentioned earlier, they do background checks, but they're not thorough. Fine, I can let that one go. But Verbo actually does not do background checks and I have that printed out here. So that's a little disturbing considering that I have two kids in middle school and they play around the neighborhood. But if these short-term rentals want to be considered businesses, treat them like businesses. It's not fair. They're bringing these people in, the least they could do is put a pamphlet out and say, look at everything Lewisville has to offer, look at all these small businesses. Because you know they're just gonna come here and maybe go to some franchises or go out of the city to whatever event that they want. How does that help this city? We need to keep those sales tax dollars here because it helps you guys essentially. Now, my painful argument. I want a house. I am currently renting long-term. And every time I have tried to get a house, I'm always outdone by somebody who can put so much more money there. I can't build roots here. I can't paint my walls, which is such a silly thing to get upset about, but I can't, I don't wanna put any of my plants in the ground because I don't wanna leave them there. They're my plants. I wanna teach the world how to garden. I love what Lewisville does. I love that no-mo zone. Like, you guys actually care about the monarchs, which is so great because now they're endangered. Nobody gets that, but you guys do. And I wanna teach that to everybody. But I can't even plant anything in my yard without the promise that, I can't take it with me unless if I wanna dig everything up. So right now, there's a bunch of pots outside my house with eyeballs on them. So, that's my life in a nutshell. But I would really like a house to paint some walls. But I would love it if you could help me with that and help the people here, help the community. I'm not saying get rid of short-term rentals. I'm just saying, make it fair for everyone. And because I'm here, I'd love to help with that, too. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate your input. I have Mary Witherspoon, followed by Alex Marquez.
Hi, I'm Mary Witherspoon, nine eighty-nine Little Den Drive, Lewisville, Texas. Been there for seventeen years. Went to school at Lewisville High School. So I am a fighting farmer all the way. I have an Airbnb right next to me. I am next door to an Airbnb. And no, they are not my neighbor. They are a party house and they advertise as a resort. Now, where in Lewisville are we a resort? Do you, are y'all living in a resort in Lewisville? Are we a resort? No, we are not a resort. We are Lewisville, Texas, not a resort. I call a resort Florida Cabo. That's a resort, not Lewisville, Texas. My house, single-family, sleeps a family of what? Normal five? My next door sleeps sixteen to eighteen. Is that single? No. I live in a neighborhood. I don't live by a hotel. I don't wanna live by a hotel. I don't wanna live by a resort. Now, everybody pretty much covered what STRs bring. Noise, trash, cars. And I am one of the ones that don't get their mail because they're parked in front of my mailbox. So I don't get my mail for three to four days. I've spoke to the mailman and he says, I'm sorry. I'll give it to you when the cars aren't parked there. Is that my fault? No. Who do I call? You all? Do I call you, Mr. Mayor? I can't get my mail. Do I need my mail? Yes. I'm also ill. I have a terminal illness. I have scleroderma, which probably none of you have ever heard. So, I do need my mail. I'm a bit, big advocator for my disease. So, I need my mail. So what do I have to do? I have to wait. Do I have time to wait? No, I can't wait. How long am I gonna be here? I don't know. So I want my mail. So how am I gonna get my mail? Do I need to go get a post office box now? I have party buses parked in my front because I, we have one car. We park in the back in our garage. But no, I have party buses. Sometimes one, sometimes two. But I have other cars, but I can't get my mail. Okay, so whenever there's a problem, what if I get sick? How's the ambulance gonna come? Where are they gonna park? In the back? Oh, you gotta go to the back because there's too many cars parked in front of my house. Or go to the neighbor. Do I have time to tell them that? No. So what are my choices? I have no choice. So do I call Goldnest and say, hey, you need to call the ambulance for me? So what do I do? So there's no choices for me. So are they neighbor-friendly? I don't know. Not lately. Door slamming is another big thing in our neighborhood. I get texts from my neighbors, you know? Because all of us there, now, just like I heard the other gentleman say, he had his kids grown up and everything, all of us have, they're all now seniors in college now. All the rest, they're all elderly in our neighborhood. So, we're in the Valley Vista area. And all of them are pretty much senior, you know? So I worry about them. The ones across the street, she's fallen like three times. And she goes, what's going on over there, you know, at that house? There's so many cars. And she's already fallen twice.
Ms. Witherspoon, that's your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input.
Thank you so much and I just hope you make the right decision.
Thank you. Alex Marquez? On deck, I've got Joheem Morales.
Hello and good night, everyone. My name is Alex Cuautemo Marquez and I reside in nine four one Sylvan Creek Drive, Lewisville, Texas, seven five zero six seven. My apologies, I wasn't prepared for any speech and pardon my accent. I was born in Mexico City. So, uh, if you don't understand, you can ask me if I can repeat myself. So, um, I got this letter stating about coming here and this is my first time. I'm hearing everyone and, um, I didn't know, I was probably doing something wrong. I bought my house in two thousand nine. I worked very hard and I paid off my house in ten years. And, um, so I own the house. In the, um, in two thousand nineteen, I got laid off, uh, from a job that I worked for like fourteen years. And, um, with that being said, I've been travel, I've been traveling around the world and I have nothing but good experiences staying on Airbnbs. Some people may not like staying in hotels and I'm one of them. I prefer to stay on Airbnbs where you have that kind of experience where it's, it's, it's kind of like a different experience. I feel like you feel the home, you feel their culture, you feel many different things when you're staying on an Airbnb. Therefore, um, I got laid off and with that experience, I support my mom, my dad. I'm the youngest of my family. So I decided to convert my house in Airbnb and I, I started it two years ago. I hear, and with all due respect, uh, for everyone that has bad experiences with the owners of the house that has the short-term rentals, um, it's not my place to say otherwise that, um, I'm a, I'm a person that takes care of my house. I have, uh, we have rules. Uh, one of my, if you go into my Airbnb website, it's like we don't, I don't allow, uh, small gatherings or events. I do respect my house, I take care of my house and I wanna keep it that way. I respect the neighbors and I have not, I have no problems, uh, whatsoever in my neighborhoods with anybody. And I didn't know that this is, was causing problems to the neighbors. I only hear that, uh, there are problems, there's obstruct their, uh, driveways where they can, um, I, I, I don't see anybody in, in anywhere that you park in front of the driveway if, if it's not your house. Uh, if you do, you call the tow company or you call the police or you go to the neighbors and say, hey, you need to move your car. I, that you, I heard about the noises of parties. Of course, there is, um, there should be maybe people that has parties on their houses and even, doesn't have to be a short-term rental, but you, we also have rules in the city where you call the police if it's after hours, you know? And then they go over there and they, they, they kinda shut you down and say, hey, this is, this is not permit. Um, I also heard about trash. Um, I have no idea where that's coming from, but, um, I take care of my place. I take care, I work very hard for it and I support my mom, my dad, which they are under social security, which is very little income. And I never thought that this was a problem. So I just wanted to say that, um, I'm one of the persons that I'll say that I follow rules and whatever you guys decide, I will agree. And I just wanted to thank you, everyone, for listening and I will recommend you my Airbnb so you can have a great experience, too. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Marquez. Just, just a tangent, um, never apologize for your accent. That just means that you speak one more language than I do. Joheem Morales? On deck, I've got Vernicia Montiel.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilmen. Thank you for having, giving me the time of day. Um, I, thank you for everyone for coming and voicing their opinions. I, I think it's important as a community that we all voiced, uh, what we believe in. Just wanna start off by just telling you guys a small story. Uh, I am a living example that the American dream is still alive and well. I was born in a small town in Mexico called Tampico-Tamolipas. I can't put, I can't put, put it on a map, I'll be honest with you guys. I was born and raised in, well, I was raised in Brownsville, Texas, in a very poor community. Uh, my parents were brought, brought me and my sister up here in Lewisville in two thousand nine. So I am a walking example of the public school system here in Lewisville. So I am a fighting farmer. Um, one thing that I do wanna voice, that I am a professional host. Um, I do own one Airbnb here in Lewisville, Texas. Uh, my address is thirteen twenty-five Cedar Ridge Drive. One thing that I do wanna make clear, as other professional hosts have spoken up here to you guys, is that we generally do everything imaginable to make sure that our neighbors are all, are respected and our space is also respected as well because every single person in here who is an owner-operator has essentially sacrificed to own that home. Now, to the people who on the opposing side, I do see your viewpoints as well and I do want to say that I am with regulation. Just like everyone else, just like people who drive around, uh, in public roads, they need to be insured and licensed. Same thing with, same, same, exact same thing has to be done with short-term rentals. You guys have to be insured and licensed. As much as I wanna stand here and say, uh, free enterprise, no taxation and all that stuff, sorry, guys, it doesn't work that way, unfortunately for us. Um, I don't mind playing by the rules. That's why I'm here speaking in front of you guys. Um, I do wanna make something very clear as well. I do teach others how to run their Airbnb host, uh, Airbnb, uh, start their Airbnb business. Majority of my clientele that I actually help out are actually senior citizens. Uh, most of these people are in positions where they have a paid-off home and unfortunately, um, they just couldn't, uh, their social security or their pension that they had doesn't support their living standards anymore. But their largest and biggest assets that they control, which is their home, allows them to live a very, very comfortable life. Now, the great thing about these people is that they understand, I understand exactly where they're coming from. They have fought for their home and I have fought for mine. So, again, I am with regulation, making sure that everything, uh, that you guys and that our neighbors are at ease. And, um, and then, yeah, so that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Morales, hold on, Mr. Morales, Mr. Morales, before you go, sorry. Thank you. So use the term that I haven't heard yet tonight, so professional host. Can you explain what a professional host is?
Uh, professional host, as any other people say, we have, uh, specific softwares that regulates decibel levels inside the home and monitoring systems. So if there's ever a claim, if there's ever an issue, we have the evidence in making sure that we're, are, are always on top of what their guests are doing. Now, we're not, now, we're not invading their specific privacy. All we are is just monitoring, uh, the amount of vehicles that are parked in front of, in front of the house, the amount of people that are coming within the property, and also the amount of decibels that are, that are in the house as well.
Is that a self-designation? Is that an Airbnb designation?
No, no, that's, that's just for us.
Okay, so you guys designate yourself.
Yeah, we're the ones who actually have to pay out of our own pockets to make sure that we, that we take care of that.
I'm sorry.
Because the last thing we wanna do is impede anyone else's, uh, uh, right to their own privacy.
I'm sorry, for clarity, does Airbnb designate you a professional host or you just declare yourself?
No, just declare myself.
Okay, fantastic. All right, very nice, one, check.
I can declare myself handsome, too, right?
Thank you. I got lots of hair, too. I'll declare that right now, so that's.
No problem. Thank you.
Veronica Montiel and then Tamara Ellis. Name and address, please.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Veronica Montiel and I reside at twenty-three seventeen Clearview Court. I'm not the owner. I am engaged for ten or fifteen years, but we've been together, so I've been living on that same property for all this time. So I was not prepared to speak to you today, but I wasn't sure if I would get another opportunity. So I just wanted to bring up a few things that I've heard from my neighbors. Uh, one of the first things I wanted to say was that someone had mentioned that it's, that a lot of the things that my neighbors have said is kind of like a scared. is kind of like a scared tactic. And that is so false, because everything that my neighbors have said is completely true. One of the things that has happened to me is that we're right on the lake, and we, there's an Airbnb, two houses down from our property. And there was a group of probably about 10 to 12 men out on the lake. And I was standing out there, I had let my dog out, and I was looking out towards the lake. And about four of them stood there, turned around. They were walking by the lake, and they looked at me, and they started making obscene gestures with their hands while they were looking at me. I was the only one outside, so I knew they were directly looking at me. So that was really freaky, because it's just, they're so close to the house. It was kind of scary. And the main thing that I wanted to tell you, and I have to choose my words really, really carefully, because I don't know how to say it without implicating anybody or causing any problems for anyone. But I was told by very reliable sources, two people, two men, that, and I swear, I don't know how to say it without being pointed at and saying, "She's crazy," or whatever. So I was told that the cartel is already here in Lewisville. And I said, "Well, how do you know that?" And because they're in law enforcement, these are people that are in law enforcement that have told me this. And they said, "Just be careful." This was a year and a half ago. Because of the Airbnbs around us, they said, "Just be careful. Look out for, you know, just be aware of your surroundings and everything. Call the police department if you see anything that's very unusual." So that is the main thing that I wanted to tell you tonight. I don't know how to prove to you. I don't know where they rent, I don't know. They did tell me that they have a hard time with them because they bounce around from Airbnb to Airbnb. And of course, there are all other different places. But to me, because I'm home alone a lot, that is a very scary thing. I have had neighbors in the two, in between two Airbnbs, and there have been arguments, cussing, and vehicles just screeching out with their driveway because they're having arguments with their girlfriend or whomever. And those are just things that bother me a lot. And I'm just reaching out to you, to the whole council. Just, I feel for you, because I know this is a very heavy decision for you to make. But I want you to just, please, I don't know if any of you own an Airbnb at all, because that would make it more difficult, I believe, to make the decision. But if you could just imagine what it's like for us to not know who's in and out of these houses. You know, I know it's been said a thousand times, but if it was your daughter, or your daughters, or your children living like that in fear of, most of the time, yes, it's fine. But I don't want to be, or my neighbors to be the statistic of something did happen to one of us, or to anybody in this city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tamara Ellis? Name and address, please.
I'm here to just, I don't have a speech to say or anything like that. I just have my personal experience. I stayed at a few Airbnbs in the past year and a half, and they've all been great. I haven't had a problem in none of them. I now work for them. I clean, I go in and clean after the other people have left. Some has been not so put together, but for the most part, it's been, there's been no destruction, no violence, anything as far as that I have witnessed or been in contact with. Also, I came to go to them because I lost my home that I had. So I looked into the Airbnbs, because I didn't want to take my children into a motel. I'm a single mom. And they took me in and let me work for them and take care of their residence. And my kids, they go to school. Well, we're in Grand Prairie now, but we were doing the one here in Lewisville, and some in Arlington. Just overall, there's, I've had a good experience with the Airbnbs. That's pretty much all I got.
Thank you. And you're 618 Columbine Lane in Grand Prairie, is that correct?
That's where I live, in Grand Prairie.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Folks, that's all of the public comment forms that I have available, or that have been filled out. We did give some grace, we got one. Fair enough, come on. I've got three? All right, let's make sure we get those, because I don't have them here. But that's okay, we got time.
Hi, real quick, my name is Jim Cousins. I live at 2457 Clay Math Drive. Mine's a little bit more unique situation than I've seen the others. I live in a town home. Presently, I was on my board for a while, the advisory committee and so on. A lot of the properties, when I bought into it, I bought it as a single-family dwelling. Since I've been there, business has been ran. Used car lots, the police have come out, tagged it. A guy had five cars along the street, was running a used car lot. We have a drug dealer lives down the street. How I found that out is I was walking down the street, that finally the people kicked him out, because being a part of the board, we were able to work on it. They were short-term renting. The guys, some big guys, were banging on his door, the wrong guy's door to go through. Our town homes are cookie cutters. What's it take next for the rounds to be going off? Because it's not a matter of if, it's when. And it's going to happen in that neighborhood. If you've ever walked there at night, it's getting worse, up and down. They're brand-new town homes. They went from, started out at $300,000, to over half a million. It's turning into garbage. You go down, there's people throwing trash all around. I have pictures of people that stayed at a short term, stayed there for three months, because they see their house is being renovated, or whatever. Well, then they take all their garbage, and they just throw it out in the streets. And when I've contacted the owners of these short-term rentals and Airbnbs, what I get is, "What do you care? You should have moved into a million-dollar property." Every one of these guys that owns these Airbnbs or short-term rentals don't even live in the city of Lewisville. So they don't care. They don't live here, they're not my neighbor. Okay, they just own a piece of property here. If I wanted to live next door to a business, I'd have bought a house next to a Walmart. If I wanted to live in a hotel, I'd have moved to a Marriott. I bought a single-family dwelling home. That's exactly what I bought here in Lewisville. The drug dealer, and right behind us, there's an elderly home and a school. I mean, when's it going to take it now? There's cars racing up and down there all the time with deals that have gone bad. You can walk down and smell weed continuously and the drugs that go on in that neighborhood. And a lot of it's from the Airbnbs. One of our worst properties is right across the railroad track by the pool. Most people there, we're going to have to raise our association dues again for a fourth time. We've already had to do a special assessment of $657, because we can't keep up with the damage that's happening to our property because of what's happening. These short-term rentals, these people move in six, seven people, four, five dogs. We'll just leave feces and garbage everywhere. We have to clean that up, because some of it's in a park where it says, "No animals," and they're letting their dogs in there. We have to have that cleaned up, because we're going to get cited by the city and the county. But they don't care. And every time that I've contacted these owners of these properties, because I have their phone numbers and their addresses being on the board, I don't care. Actually, one of them's a realtor who threatened me with, "I know the guy that signed a petition, he's got 10 properties. We'll tank these properties and we'll really stick it to you." I shouldn't have to live like that. I have the names of all these people, I have all of it. They were supposed to have a meeting this weekend where I live, and the people coming together, and I was going to try to get more and more people involved. There's a huge silent majority in where I live. And the police have been out there 24, 29 Siski several times. It's a property rented out by a guy that owns a business, and part of the compensation for these guys that live there is a free place at any given time. There's three, four, five guys living in this house. And neighbors have to deal with that.
Where do, I didn't catch where you live.
I live in Windhaven Crossing, 2457 Clay Math, this is the street. And it's, and now, how I know town homes and condos can be nice, and even living here in Lewisville. I lived in one in Michigan for 20-plus years. We made it so nice, such a beautiful place to live. I was able to sell my home on a Sunday afternoon, because there was a waiting list to get in, because it was all single-family dwelling. It was a nice place to live. But I know the police have been out there to the Siski Drive several times. And I've contacted the owner, know what he says? "Not my problem. Go ahead, issue me the $50 fine. I'm making $3,200 a month off these guys." So what do we do? What do we do as homeowners that live in? And again, mine is a little bit more unique, living in a town home. Your neighbors are right on top of you. There's times when they'll move in six, seven cars, and they just park them, illegally parked vehicles, illegally parked. And not to be disrespectful to the police, a couple of times they've been out there, and this would have been told. Well, I said, "It's not a properly-registered vehicle. It's on public city street. It's not a registered vehicle. Should it be towed?" Well, no, because unless he moves it, he hasn't really committed a violation. That's not what the law says. It's an illegally, it's considered an abandoned vehicle, if I'm correct. They won't, I hate to be disrespectful, police department, but you won't tow the vehicles. I can walk to my property right now, point out six cars are illegally parked, some of them not moved in months. Nothing's been done. How will we live? That's my time, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, thank you, appreciate your input.
Thank you.
I had two others? Yes, sir? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
James, 1313 Winnipeg Drive. I'm not only a proper owner here at Lewisville, also I'm an operator of a property management. As well, I'm an insurance agent for a big corporation licensed in 17 different states. Short-term rental, there is three different things here that we all should understand. I didn't come prepared for this speech here, but me as a resident, I want to contribute back to the community. Short-term, mid-term, and long-term. Those are three different categories. So whenever decision-making, you have to break it down. Sometimes 15 days and less, consider short-term. 15 days and more, it's considered as a mid-term. And any more than 30 days at times to one year, it goes to the long-term. I got involved in 18 different operations for the short-term in the past three years. All of them not just Airbnb. Airbnb is one of the platforms that we use. But a lot of people here, as a resident, I don't feel comfortable to rent in my house for someone who's a stranger. The problem that is happening not only in the city legally, in the insurance industry as well, that we don't understand fully what the industry is. It's a new industry. So we try to adapt, and we try to understand. And that's what it's coming this about, to communicate. A lot of the residents here, they're not feeling safe, because most of the houses, they don't put a limit of occupancy. So if it's more than, you know, a limit cap of 10 people on the contract that you have on the platform, you can say, "Hey, you're allowed to bring eight family members. You're allowed to bring 10 family members." The problem is when the people bring 12, 14, 18. And most of them are younger kids that come in town for whatever reason. And of course, me as a resident, I don't feel comfortable. But the problem, every time someone calls the property management and say, "Hey, we have a problem," we see two trends. The first one, when the house allows more than 10 people to be there, which overoccupies the streets, and of course, it's a inconvenience for all of us, because it takes space on the street, which my daughter could park, or my friend could park, and the park is not available. Two is the noise level that happens. But this is not like, you know, after 10 o'clock or PM. They respect at the time. And every time that we communicate with the owners as well. The problem with the short-term rentals is not the owner operated. It's when they manage several houses, which it's called subleasing, or they call the, that's another term that they use. When the managers, they occupy, they have 10 properties under the management, they don't control the neighbors, they only control the house. So the owners that are operating their houses, we don't have problems, because they have good communication with the neighbors. They have good communication with the law enforcement. As a matter of fact, every time that we rent a house to someone, we can specify that if you bring more than four cars, you're not allowed to stay there. So a lot of the problem is not coming with the business itself. It's more parking on the streets, or sometimes by the lakes. So the lakes bring a lot of people that want to enjoy freely, per se. And that's what the level noise is, a little higher. The cars are coming because they do parties. And that's one of the problems that we don't have on this side of town. It's only on the side of the lake. A couple points that I want to present here as well for the benefit of operating a short-term rental or hosting a short-term rental in the city allows Lewisville families to welcome their relatives for reunions, gatherings, and public events. So a lot of kids graduating from Lewisville High School here, people come from out of state or out of town, and they stay on the short-term rentals. We have a lot of elderly here in Lewisville, that they're debilitated with their health. Their kids come to Lewisville to take care of them, and they stay here three weeks, four weeks, five weeks. They don't want to stay on their parents. They say, "Hey, my parent's house is the parent's house. We want to rent a house and take care of my, of my parents." A lot of this situation is showing up more and more often, which the elderly need some type of a care. The relatives or the family members are coming in town and taking care of them. As well, they facilitate the temporary housing for employees, Lewisville hospitals. We get a lot of nurses and a lot of doctors that come and stay here for a couple, a few weeks to supply the needs of the hospital, that the hospital has a shortage in professionals. The third one, allows the city to collect extra revenue to invest in our own city. These people pay taxes, actually. Besides the property taxes, we re-emitt the tax to the city, which the taxes stay here. They pay and they go away, and we reap the benefits to invest in the infrastructure as well. It helps Lewisville residents to create extra revenue so they can supplement their extra expense with the proper insurance. Like the gentleman back there, it's an extra revenue that he can collect. A lot of people are having a hard time paying the property taxes. They say, "Wait, what can we do? Maybe rent a room, maybe two rooms, or maybe the whole house." It helps the own residents here, besides all the noise and the negativity here.
That's your time, sir.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you for your input. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Natasha D. Hart, 251 West Walters. I was not planning to speak today. I was not actually here for this. I was here for the next thing that's on your list, that I have to leave and go take care of my kids. So I'm not going to be there for that. But I do happen to own a short-term rental, and I have a totally different story than any of these I've heard here. So I own two, one is here and one is in another state. The one that's here, I think probably like a lot of people my age, we do our best to take care of our elders. And my mother-in-law is partially supported by us. When she comes to visit, she struggles to get up our stairs. And I have limited space for her, because we have a disabled son that takes up a lot of space in our home. So we saved, and we bought a very small home that's a few blocks away from ours, so that she wouldn't necessarily have to have a car to get around. And we've also lived there ourselves when we were doing renovations on our home to accommodate our disabled son. So we've both stayed there, our family stays there. And to help pay the bills on that home, because we are not in the vacation home income bracket, we do a short-term rental on it. So we've never had any problems with it. I don't think that our neighbors actually even know that it's a short-term rental. And most of the people that have spoken today, it feels like they're speaking about three or four properties. I think that there probably is a silent majority of us that no one's talking about, because there are no problems. I've never had any problems with either of mine. It's been a really positive experience. It's helped pay bills. I have not gotten rich on it. I still come out negative every single month. But it's absolutely been a wonderful thing for our family. And as I mentioned, our family's kind of original. We have a whole lot of kids, and one of them is disabled. So we don't stay in hotels. We can't stay in hotels. Airbnbs are wonderful for us. And we see that they've been wonderful for other people. We have repeat guests, people coming to visit family members, and they're now friends of ours. So they will now text and say, "I'm jumping on Airbnb and I'm booking, because I'm coming to see my mom this weekend." So I don't have any of the negatives. I don't have any of the negatives from my neighbors. Nobody parks in their yard. I have neighbors that own their home across from my permanent house that park in their yard. yard, but I have never had any of my Airbnbers disrespect my property or park in my yard. So I think that's all I have to say, and good luck on the next thing that I was going to stay for, but I'm not.
Thank you for your.
Good night.
All right. If there are other comments to be made, you can of course email any of your city council or city staff, just hop onto the city website and look for council, use the search bar and you can find that information. I want to thank everybody for being respectful, I want to thank everybody for their input, we will continue to gather information on this. There are no easy solutions, as I think we've all heard, but I do appreciate the neighborhoods coming out and, and everybody listening to all sides of this, it gives us great input, and I appreciate your time this evening. With that, we're going to move on to item E, public hearing one. A public hearing, consideration of ordinance granting a zone change from single-family residential R seven-point-five district to Old Town Mixed Use One OTMU One District on approximately point-one-seven-five-seven acres, being a portion of Lot Two Block A, L.M. Keeley's Edition, located at two-thirty-eight Samuel Street, as requested by Natasha DeHart, Mac Apartments LLC, the applicant and property owner. Case number twenty-three dash oh-eight dash one-four dash Z. The applicant is requesting to rezone two-hundred, two-thirty-eight Samuel Street from single-family residential R seven-five district to Old Town Mixed Use One District. Staff finds the request in alignment with the Old Town Master Plan's recommendation zoning for the area, as well as the Louisville twenty-twenty-five Vision Plan's big move for Old Town. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing of the zone change at their meeting on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption, and we do have Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, available for questions. The public hearing is now open. Council, any questions, comments? With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Public hearing is now closed unanimously, six to nothing. Council, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, city attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately zero-point-one-seven-five-seven acres of land, being a portion of Lot Two, Lot A, L.M. Keeley's Edition, located at two-three-eight Samuel Street, from single-family residential district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use One District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item two, public hearing, consideration of ordinance granting a zone change from single-family residential R seven-five district to Old Town Mixed Use Two District on approximately point-four-seven-oh-two acres, legally described as lots nine and ten, block three of the OB-Dix subdivision, located at four-twenty-five and four-thirty-three Edward Street, as requested by William P. Wedge, the applicant and property owner, case number twenty-three dash oh-eight dash thirteen dash Z. The applicant is requesting to rezone four-twenty-five and four-thirty-three Edward Street, from single-family residential seven-five district to Old Town Mixed Use Two District, to facilitate future redevelopment. Staff finds this request in alignment with the Old Town Master Plan, recommended zoning for the area, as well as Louisville twenty-twenty-five Vision Plan's big move for Old Town. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing at their meeting on September nineteenth, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Ludke available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. I do have Mr. Wedge here, who is available for questions, and is in support, but does not wish to speak. Council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Public hearing is now closed, six to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
City attorney?
This is an ordinance of Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately zero-point-four-seven-zero-two acres of land, legally described as lots nine and ten, block three of the OB-Dix subdivision, located at four-two-five and four-three-three Edward Street, from single-family residential R-dash-seven-point-five district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use Two District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. All right, public hearing, item three, consideration of ordinance granting a zone change from agricultural open space district to light industrial district on four-point-two-nine acres out of the P. Harmanson survey, abstract six-oh-four, located at the southeast corner of State Highway one-twenty-one Business and West Vista Ridge Mall Drive, as requested by Hawkeye Realty Schreiber LP, the property owner, twenty, case number twenty-three-oh-four-sixPZ. Subject property contains a total of six-point-seven-eight acres, with four-point-two-nine acres in Louisville, and the remaining portion located within the city of Capel. The site is located at a gateway into the city of Louisville, as identified by the Southwest Louisville, Louisville Small Area Plan. The property owner requests a zone change to light industrial to facilitate future industrial development. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I do have Mr. Richard Ludke available for planning, from the planning director, available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. I do have Mr. Robert Payne available to speak in support. Mr. Payne, if you would, name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm Robert Payne, I'm about thirty-five. Drexel Drive in Dallas, Texas, and y'all have been here for at least three hours, so I'm going to take up your time. Just, I'm, I'm the principal for the property owner, Hawkeye Realty Schreiber, and this request is consistent with the area plan, the gateway area, so I've asked for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm here for questions, if you have.
Council, if there are any, if there are any questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Council, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, city attorney?
This is an ordinance of Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately four-point-two-nine acres of land, out of the P. Harmanson survey, abstract number six-oh-four, located at the south, southeast corner of State Highway one-twenty-one Business and West Vista Ridge Mall Drive, from agricultural open space district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Item four, public hearing. Consideration of the adoption of the twenty-twenty-three Louisville Old Town Transit Oriented Development Master Plan. The Old Town Transit, we didn't vote, I don't have voting on the screen. About that, that's what threw me, sorry about that. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously, thank you, appreciate that. Item four, public hearing, consideration of the adoption of the twenty-twenty-three Louisville Old Town Transit Oriented Development Master Plan update. The Old Town Transit Oriented Development Master Plan was adopted in October twenty-ten upon completion of Denton County Transit Authority's A-Train Passenger Rail Station in Old Town Louisville. The plan was last updated in twenty-seventeen, the proposed update was expanded to include the area east of the rail station, and takes into consideration current market conditions and public input, along with a utility and infrastructure analysis to realize the plan's vision. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval four to nothing on October third at twenty-twenty-three, and it is recommended that the city council adopt the update as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, is available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. There are no public comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Council, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the update?
First of all, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the document, the infrastructure analysis, that's four hundred and some odd pages. I'm going to really enjoy that, thank you. With that, I'm going to move to adopt the update as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item five, public hearing, consideration of ordinances amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter Four, adopting the twenty-twenty-one International Construction Codes with local amendments and standards, including the Building Code, Residential Building Code, Plumbers, Plumbing Code, Fuel Gas Code, Mechanical Code, Energy Conservation Code, Existing Building Code, Swimming Pool and Spa Code, Chapter Nine Property Maintenance Code, and Chapter Five Fire Code, and amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter Four, adopting the twenty-twenty National Electric Code with local amendments. Staff is submitting the twenty-twenty-one edition of the International Codes and twenty-twenty National Electrical Code with the North Central Texas Council of Governments amendments to the city council for adoption. The new codes are necessary to ensure that the city keeps pace with state laws, changing technology, and practices the construction industry. Staff is asking us to conduct the public hearing as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. Chris McGinn, Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services, and Mark McNeil, our fire chief, available for questions. The public hearing on this is now open. There are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute break, just so everybody kind of has a time to get their head back on straight. We will reconvene at eight-fifty. All right, we are back in the session, it is eight-fifty-two PM. Next up is item F, visitor-citizens forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City secretary, do we have any comment cards?
We had one submitted, but the gentleman has left, sir.
Do we know what it was regarding?
He just was wanting to do an invitation to a, to an event that's happening in Flower Mound. He'll probably email the details, we'll make sure council gets it.
Was it Brian Webb?
Hmm, no, sir.
Okay. Next up, item G, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council, will be enacted with one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City secretary, do we have any speakers or ecomments to remove items?
No speakers or ecomments tonight, sir.
All right, do I have any requests to remove items from the consent agenda?
Yes, you do.
Councilmember Kate?
Part, I'm sorry. Item number nine.
All right. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item nine.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda minus item nine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item nine. Approval of variance to Chapter Three Animals, Article Three, Division Two, Section Three dash eight-five, same agricultural animals, Article Five, Section Three dash one-five-one, restricted premise, and Article Six, Section Three dash one-five-six, location, number, and types of chickens allowed at twelve-ninety-two Martian Place. The city's fair housing officers approved a request under the Fair Housing Act that necessitates a variance to the following sections of the city code. Section Three dash eighty-five, which prohibits the keeping of agricultural animals without a valid permit. Two, Section Three dash one-fifty-one, which requires certain minimum spacing requirements for agricultural animals, included but not limited to at least one-third acre per emu, and restricts the grazing, foraging, or roaming of agricultural animals near than twenty-five feet from any other adjoining property lines. And three, Section Three dash one-fifty-six, which limits the maximum number of chickens per residential lot to six, if there are no other regulated animals, and the total number of animals to six, including the chickens. It's recommended that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion to.
Well, I have some discussion.
You have a comment?
Oh, I have some comments.
All right.
Okay. I have a lot of things that I would like to say, but I've had a lot of things that I now know that I cannot say. I do just want to say that the petitioner of this particular variance is known to be such a strong proponent of transparency within the city of Louisville. So I was wanting to be very transparent about this, but there are just certain things that I cannot say. So people, you're going to have to do your own due diligence to look at what we're talking about. I will just say that my personal opinion, my opinion as representative of place three of the city of Louisville is this is nothing less than a cowardice manipulation of federal regulations.
Any other comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion and a second, council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to one. Thank you, council. Regular hearing, item eleven, consideration of two alternative standards associated with agriculture, agricultural, architectural standards and building envelope standards for Saint Marina Church on approximately three-point-two-six acres located at twenty-five-twenty-five MacArthur Boulevard, legally described as Dallas Teachers Credit Union Edition, Lot One Block A, Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by Awad Eskender, a of Paradigm Consulting, on behalf of Marina Coptic Orthodox Church, the property owner, case number twenty-three dash oh-eight dash ten dash ALT STD. The Marina Coptic Orthodox Church proposed, proposes to convert an existing credit union building into a church and update the exterior design to reflect the traditional style of the church architecture. The following alternative standards are requested. A, to allow one-hundred percent cement stucco in lieu of the required eighty percent brick or stone, and B, to allow a building height of fifteen feet, ten inches, in lieu of the required twenty-foot maximum. The overlay district board recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on October, on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. It's recommended city council approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption, and we do have Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, available for questions. Council, if there are any questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Just one, I just want to just thank the zoning staff on this one. This one's, I have to say, it's one of the most attractive buildings I think I've seen, especially out of an existing building, so congratulations on doing all that.
Good job.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Passes unanimously. Item twelve, consideration of two alternative standards to the Louisville Unified Development Code regarding landscaping and exterior building materials related to a proposed office warehouse development located on the north side of McKenzie Street, approximately one-hundred feet west of Red Bud Street, in Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by Benjamin Gantor of Lucky's Barber Shop, the property owner. McKenzie Industrial Park is made of voluntary right-of-way dedication to facilitate future street reconstruction and realignment along McKenzie Street. The dedication will impact landscaping and exterior building materials requirements. The proposal was in compliance with the landscaping and exterior building material requirements of the Unified Development Code prior to the voluntary right-of-way dedication. The following two alternative standards are requested. A, to allow a reduced landscape buffer ranging from thirty feet to five feet in width, and B, to allow metal exterior building materials in lieu of the required masonry. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and it's recommended that the city council approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Ludke is, of course, available for questions. Council, is there any questions or comments?
Move to approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, thank you, council. Item I, reports, we're going to start with Councilmember Kelly on the far end. He's got a yellow tablet, he's, that many notes, dude.
I took a lot of notes, a lot of notes today.
Bring it down, we need one or two.
I'd like to recap the entire meeting we just had, that's alphabetically. So I actually, I just want to congratulate the Louisville Fire Department for, for beating Arlington PD in the twentieth annual Battle of the Badge over the weekend. That was a fantastic event, always lots of fun. Our own PD department did great as well, good showing, Louisville Fire Department did fantastic, thank you for that.
Maybe next year.
You didn't do a half-bad job emceeing the thing either, you and your brother, so that was a lot of fun.
It was fun, absolutely. I haven't been invited back yet, so we'll see what happens.
You got a year. Councilmember Green?
Nothing to report, although I am disappointed that Patrick did not do the Zumba class.
Very.
Good to know.
Something to aspire to, possibly.
Some donations to Sir Louisville would have got me right up there next year.
There you go.
Councilmember Jones?
So apologies for being late, I have a class for the next few weeks now that'll have me on Mondays from two to five fifteen, so I'll be running a little late now. If any of our Louisville police see me moving a little fast, give me, give me some grace. Neighborhood Grants Workshop is tomorrow. Louisville Neighborhood Services invites residents to learn about home repair, resources, and grants. It'll be in the classroom one of the Louisville Grant Theater at one-hundred North Charles Street. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kay?
I have all kinds of stuff to say, but it's late. I just want to say thank you to the staff. What a week. I mean, I have been with most of y'all at different times this past week, and it's been just awesome. We have, we have the greatest team ever. And to PD, maybe next year? But I will say the Assistant Chief Wallow really looked awesome in his outfit, and I have the address, if anybody wants to order it now. Thank you, Chief, for that.
Good to know.
I know. You know, we have some awesome swag to wear from PD, so it'd be good to have some from the Fire Department, too. But anyway, so that is just how it goes. Go see our animals at the animal shelter, and they need some good forever homes. And I think that our next meeting, we have exciting, exciting news that's going to be coming from Parks. Good job. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
As mayor, some library activities for the week. I know you know this first one probably reads a little bit differently, but it does say Star Wars Reads Day for families with children of all ages. Saturday, October fourteenth, two to four PM, Bennett Children Ring, no registration required. Second one, barbecue class with Righteous Barbecue for Adults, Wednesday, October eighteenth, six to seven thirty, Crawford Meeting Room, registration preferred. Spooky Teen Night at the Library for teens age thirteen to eighteen, Friday, October twentieth, six thirty to nine, registration is required. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, mayor. Number of activities and things going on at the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, on October twentieth, the Acoustic Fridays Songwriter Challenge, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, and I don't know what the word is for the, for the challenge, but it's always interesting. What was it?
Wolves.
Wolves, that's right. Okay, thank you. So the songwriter challenge, every song has to refer to wolves, so. Then on October twenty-eighth, the Rocky Horror Picture Show Film Screening, presented by the city of Louisville.
Yes.
The Music Man, presented by Christie Youth Theater of DFW, on November third through the fifth and tenth through the ninth through the twelfth, with two, two performances on both the fourth and the eleventh. As always, acoustic jam sessions on Friday, Friday evenings, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, and that goes from six to nine. Some activities going on. We've already, Councilmember Jones already mentioned the Grant Workshop, which will be presented by the city of Louisville on the seventeenth. Garden Secrets Class, Ask a Master Gardener Roundtable, presented by, by Keep Louisville Beautiful on October nineteenth. And then there are two exhibitions, Chaos and Order, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, now through October twenty-first, and Off the Wall, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, now through November fourth. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City attorney? City secretary?
Mr. Lutke? Mayor, I have an announcement about a very important upcoming event associated with the Business One Twenty-One Corridor Plan. As part of our public engagement process, the planning department staff is hosting a town hall associated with the plan. It will be held next Monday, October the twenty-third, from three thirty PM to seven thirty PM at the Next Step Center, located at the corner of Business One Twenty-One and Bel Air. Louisville Police Department's Neighborhood Resource Officers will be grilling hot dogs, and the Parks and Recreation Department will have Play Louisville on Wheels for the children that are in attendance. We encourage all property owners, business owners, and residents near the corridor to come and provide input and provide, to receive an update on the different issues associated with the plan and any other interested individuals. So we're expecting a really good turnout. We have distributed literally thousands of these little pamphlets and made in-person visits to all of the businesses and all the multifamily developments along the corridor, and all the schools have also passed out these, these reminders. So we're expecting a really good crowd and a lot of really good feedback.
That's very exciting. Glad to hear it.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Samples?
Yeah, so in partnership with Louisville Area Chamber of Commerce, we have the Workforce Development Summit that's happening this Wednesday, October eighteenth, from nine to one thirty at the Next Step Center. It will be two panels discussing local work, workforce challenges, best practices, and innovative solutions, and it is free of charge.
Yeah, show up. It should be a good group. Mr. Salmon? Nothing? Okay, okay. Marsha?
I just have the Lake Report, so we are at seventy-five point seven percent full at five hundred and sixteen point five eight feet.
All the way through? Chief?
Mayor, we'll be hosting the members of the Chin community on October twenty-eighth from five to seven at the Thrive Center. It'll be a town hall type setting focusing on teen violence and drug abuse, and I will get you guys a flyer on that.
Thank you, sir. City manager?
No, sir.
Only thing I have is Best Little Brew Fest in Texas this Saturday. If you guys haven't been, this is, I think, year eleven, so they've been, they've been doing it for a while now. So, but come on out. We are going to have beer and public art. They've got a bunch of artists coming out this year, so that'll be, that'll be a great event. So that's this Saturday. Hop on the city website for BLBFIT. With that, we don't have any other workshops, so we need to go into closed session. So in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five fifty-one point oh seven-two, Real Estate, Property Acquisition, Section five fifty-one point oh eight-seven, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section five fifty-one point oh seven-four, Personnel, City Manager Claire Powell, Municipal Judge Brian Holman, Alternative Municipal Court Judge Kimberly Lafferty, Alternative Municipal Court Judge Holly Fox, Alternative Municipal Court Judge Robin Ramsey, and Excession five fifty-one point oh seven-one, Legal Issues Related to STR Properties, if we need anything more on that. With that, we are going to go into closed session. Oh, well, that was aggressive. All right, we're going to come back into regular session. Counsel, is there any action to be taken?
Yes, mayor. I move, one, to amend the city manager's contract so that, beginning October one, twenty twenty-three, she shall, at the beginning of each fiscal year, notify the Director